Commissioner's meeting, welcome. And we start with the pledge. Walter Releas and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, morning. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda today? I'd like to pull the chairman's signature on solid waste district final lease and the resolution I would like to pull those two items.
And also an update on the solid waste district, there was one appointment left. There was Bob Hartley, our board member, he was in the hospital, he just couldn't get his paperwork in. Those positions were all detailed.
Is that under the board appointments?
Yes.
Okay. Michael. How are you?
All right, how are you?
All right, how's Jennifer?
Twice as easy as usual.
Oh, we gotta get video this.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda?
I know we appear the agenda is amended.
A second out.
Call the vote, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 All of those against? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything that we want to pull from that? We've got those two issues on there, and then anything else? Public comment? We move on to that. Oh, my fault. I moved to, on the most usual.
Move to approve consent agenda as amended.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All of those against? Okay.
So, on this approval of the final lease, the bank and the solid waste district and the county is discussing that. We need the chairman's, we need to approve the chairman's signature on it once it's approved, so that once they have that final lease approved, then they will bring it here and we'll get Dawn's signature. But it needs to be done ahead of time, so that there's no delay in getting it taken care of. They're in the final stages of getting that done.
The reason I had that fold, I want, I do not want to be on the vote to do that fold. Where I'm on that board, same with that resolution, since I'm on that board, I do not want to be on that vote.
And I do have the resolution. It ha, it needs to be done today, because it has to be done in order to get, keep moving on.
It goes in hand to hand with that lease agreement.
See, I did send it, but you can go ahead and put it down if you want to see it again.
What that lease, just to explain more of what that lease agreement is, a board cannot borrow money from the bank. You cannot encumber future members, future boards with a debt. By doing this lease, it's a way to get around that. The bank can, basically, the bank is going to lease the landfill until the notice paid off. Then the lease will be terminated and then become a backdoor lease. If it defaults, they're, they don't want the landfill. But that's just, it's a loophole, it's a legal way to get it all out there so a board can borrow money from the bank.
We all had a meeting, the solid waste district, the bank, Michael and myself, and everything is.
It's all on the up and up. It's just, it's a way to get around not encumbering a future board with a debt.
Statement of the resolution 2024-1, it reads, "A resolution authorizing Weston County, State of Wyoming, comma, State of Wyoming, to enter into a lease purchase agreement relating to the acquisition and construction of a new five acre cell access road, electrical infrastructure, and storage pad at the landfill site south of Newcastle, Wyoming."
Okay, now, this, the resolution works hand in hand with that lease agreement. So, certain things is on the up and up, the legal, so it can be done. Any other questions about that lease agreement in the resolution?
Did you, did you want to say it? Who's been filling the board blank?
Our six in board members. Oh, we got a letter from Sam Hallowell, so.
And then this is for the historical presentation board. It's Dr. Torrey.
Get mine on. On those two items, I'm here for answering questions on everyone on that board, I have the same committee.
So on resolution 2024-1.
I'll take a crack at it. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-1 for chairman's signature to approve the resolution today, correct? And you will come in and sign it once the process is finished, is that?
Resolution is that. We need the board's, we need the board's signature on the resolution today.
Okay.
We also need to approve the lease with the, with the bank.
Okay.
Those two, these be got.
Let's try this again. Make a motion to approve resolution 2024-1 and the lease with, the lease with the bank. Correct. Also approve that for signatures.
Second. Give motion that's been made and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against? When the resolution passes. I'd like to reflect that I did not have conflict with this. Thank you.
Well, Sam over here, we approved Sam's waiting on boss.
Okay.
He's just detained. Somebody gave him.
Why not? Well, sorry, thank you.
We use different color besides green, you can't even see the numbers. You might want to sign this.
You can have that written in your plan.
There's two up in the row, can't see the number.
Huh?
Allegedly.
No, I mean, it's, you're right. You have to write it all. I agree. And if it fades, it will get. Just hit that one. Okay.
I'm sticking on, I give those pages, I'm sticking on top of the pages.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, Nathan wants to print it off real fast.
Okay.
Print these off, do you just want one copy or one for everything?
I don't care, I think it's hurt next to his hand, look, I didn't have it. I mean, it was sent to us yesterday, and you didn't get a copy to. I said name Hamelman to you, is that ringing bell? Why it's individual co-author of the lease? Is there something wrong in Weston County?
No.
Yeah, strange. It's strange when you can speak to the radio. Because it's a judge. It's supposed to be a judge, didn't you? Did you, did you hear, what you meant by that, didn't you? I'm good.
That's so cool. Very good, Ethan. And that, that's my call.
Well, students got hurt. She had absolver surgery, so I'm not sure. It's not the situation down there. It was a perfect storm, you have injured officer, another one gone, another one off duty. Because of the job doing, he was trying to get a kid. I don't, I don't think it was my house. It might have been a different house.
Chris, Todd, do you want to read on that before we continue? Moving on to public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Thank you. My name is Stanley Jocinski, taxpayer, landowner. Start out first by congratulating Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Burton for their positions. Good luck with it. About three meetings ago, I spoke out against the AGX AIM system, which Gilbert Nilson was trying to get the county to adopt and finance. When I spoke out against this, I said it was an app. And I said that it was being pushed here by Department Homeland Security. So today, in order to get the record straight, I want to say that Gilbert Nilson was on the agenda later that day to push this app, or this system. And upon sitting here, he disputed two things I said. He said it wasn't an app, and he wasn't Department Homeland Security. The AGX AIM system's first one and a half pages calls it an app, a powerful emergency management and communication app. The app is very sophisticated, yet extremely easy to use. The AG AIM app is powerful by DRS as user-friendly push-button app. AG AIM app gives first responders new levels of situational alert. So it is an app. And secondly, if you go to westerncounty.gov on the homepage, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, you'll find Homeland Security Office with the number 746-4315. If you dial, if I dial that number, who do you think's going to answer? Gilbert Nilson. Okay? So, he's either ignorant to his job and this app, that he's trying to push on the whole of Weston County including the schools, or he's misleading the people. It can't be both. It's one or the other. So I'm here today to set the record straight. I have five copies of this. I don't know if you ever checked this app out yourself, but it's an app. It always was an app. And Gilbert Nilson was wrong when he said it wasn't. And he was wrong when he said he's not Department Homeland Security. I think he needs to be addressed, I think he needs to be held accountable for those statements, and he needs to correct them one way or another. Personally, in the economic future that's ahead for Weston County, and you're going to talk about freezing job hiring coming up, the first job I would get rid of was Department of Homeland Security in this, in every other county in this country, 31,000 counties. And if I was a commissioner, I would defund the Weston County share of Gilbert Nilson's job. That same day that he said he wasn't Department Homeland Security, this county board of commissioners gave him permission to pursue four grants from Department of Homeland Security. So, if you walk like a duck, you talk like a duck, you're a duck. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. Any other public comment? Walter, were you going to say something? You had your hand up before he did.
If I did, I was scratching my head or something along those lines.
All right, moving on, and I apologize again, this is new to me, so it's my fault we're a little bit behind. On to old business, vault side update.
Yeah, I need Becky in here for that. All right, I sent you guys the draft contract on the new arrangement. Oh, it's been a couple weeks now, I think. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it, have any changes? You want me to submit it to, or what's it, Jeff Campbell? The only other issue is Becky did contact me, and they tried to pay from April to December, but it was only an amount of like $5,300 bucks. So he, he was trying to pay only the 20%, going retroactive. And I don't believe that we ever agreed to that. So I thought we were going to do the 80/60 up until this new contract is reached. So, with your authority, I'll talk to him and say pay us the right amounts. I think Becky has the data of what we're supposed to be paid.
Well, unfortunately, the data that he sent isn't the data that he normally sends to us. So, normally, he would send us the gross amount, and then he would send us each individual that paid them, and then each page that they downloaded. So we would get paid the 80% of the gross amount made per month, and then we would get 60% per page downloaded. While he just sent me the generic, so we have no idea who subscribed for each month, how many pages they downloaded each month. So, you know, I can have Michael figure the 80% growth to figure the 60% per page. Don't have that data, and I highly doubt he's going to do this. Michael could probably request that from him, asking to please give us the data that he always gives us every other month to go along with the check. But $5,000 is not at all what we were expecting to be paid.
I think it's fair that he gives us that data, because we have to put that in paragraph 12 of our contract, the amount he's supposed to pay us, maybe 80/60 split. So, I can reach out to him and get that information.
Michael, if we accept that, aren't we accepting those terms, the amount that he sent?
Yeah.
Because we're under no obligation to accept that until the new contract was signed. We're not, under no obligation to accept that arrangement.
That's why we did the cash.
Right, yes. So, we gotta get the right amount in there before we cash in the check from April to December. So we've got to get the right amount in there before we cash in the check from April to December 23.
So you'll send him a letter, call him, and say we're not accepting the check, return it?
Yeah, give us the right data.
Sorry.
What were we expecting the total to be approximately?
It was...
It was a lot.
Probably at least $30,000 bucks, wasn't it Becky?
Oh, it was way more than $5,000. I don't know. So the lowest that we got was between $1,500 and $2,000 a month. So since April was what he was paying us for. Because we don't have any contract yet. We haven't agreed on the 20 yet, so we're still working on the 80/60.
Can we move this back on to old business for the next meeting? Give you an opportunity to reach out and see where we're at with it.
Yeah, we can do that. I was surprised when Becky called me and said we got a check of $5,300.
Hopefully we'll accept it, I guess.
And I can send you, I mean, I don't know if you still have the breakdown of what it used to be. If you don't have a copy of that, I can send you a new one.
Yeah, if I have that.
Any other discussion on this? Moving on to attorney attendance at meetings. You have your schedule, go ahead.
Yeah, I gave you guys, thank you Tina, for getting that to me. I gave you guys the schedule for the district court judges. You looked through quite a few... There's quite a few Tuesdays that hit with you guys' Tuesdays, so we'll have to just sit down and figure out which Tuesdays they are. I can see one in March for sure, February it looks like. We just have to sit down and figure out how you guys want to handle that.
So Michael, can you make arrangements to have somebody here on a regular, without changing anything that we do? Or is that out of the question? You know, you have three attorneys, but I don't know what their schedules are. So my question to you is, is can that happen? Or what is it that you'd like us to do to make sure that we have an attorney attendance for our meetings?
Well, it's hard to predict the future, but I don't know how willing Jeannie is to step in on days where I'm booked upstairs.
Yeah, it seems like we're, both of us have court typically on one of those days. So it's either I have a couple of hearings and Mike might have one, and I'll have one later in the day. So it's kind of a juggling act, I think, on Tuesdays for both of us because we both typically have court. Some of the cases, I think we could probably have the other ones covered. Some, because we've done it the long stretch, it probably makes sense for us to keep it and try to do the hearing. So I think, one, we could try to juggle. And so if Mike's upstairs and I try to come down, I mean, there might be an occasion where we both need to be there if it's a big case for trying to get ready for a jury trial or something. The other option is we could ask Anthony if he would be available on those days where we're really booked upstairs, both of us. Maybe Anthony would be willing to come over on those days and be here for that. So I think just knowing what those days are, and we can maybe have a discussion with the judges too. Usually, usually their court dates are scheduled pretty heavy in the mornings, and then if the slump tapers off, then they'll go home early on those days. But we might be able to have a discussion in the future too and say, hey, on those days where it's the first and third, can you try to schedule things, you know, in the afternoons? Because we'd be more likely to be here in the mornings and there in the afternoons. We might be able to have some discussions like that with the judge's office and Tina, just to see if there's a way we can kind of finagle that too.
Then is there a way that you guys could put a, I mean, a timeframe on, you know, hey, I'm going to talk to them? I mean, if there's something we can do to help the situation, I don't think the board is opposed to it, but we just want to try to make sure that we have attorney representation at our meetings for all these reasons. It's been a concern, at least for me, I'm sure for the rest of the commissioners, but I'm not speaking for them. To lie separate. If you have another suggestion on how we do that, I think we're all willing to hear it.
We can, we can talk to the judges, I don't, I mean, it's, go ahead Tina.
Absolutely, you can talk to them. I will put out there that when they have hearings in the mornings, they are scheduled either in Cook County or Campbell County in the afternoon. So I'm not sure. More, obviously, you don't know until you ask. However, that might be an issue as well. Because they just, they don't go home to go home. They have other hearings that they hear in the afternoons as well.
Could we ask that you, we move it to old business, and you guys have an opportunity to talk to the judges? And, you know, we still would request that we have attorney present during our meetings. Any other commissioners you'd like to comment on?
I guess, I think that's a good idea to give them an opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves and perhaps with the judges. And then I feel like we should be thinking about if there's no room for them to change on their end, perhaps we could have a couple afternoon meetings. Meetings start at two or three when you're probably done with court by then. So we could...
I'm open for any suggestions.
That might be a good idea too because I think some of the public would like that opportunity at least every once in a while to, you know, folks work and it's difficult for them to be here in the mornings anyway. So maybe every once in a while, if you gave them an opportunity later in the day, maybe they could have an easier opportunity to come to the meetings, so.
You may be able to kill two birds with one stone with that. We've had requests before of having later meetings, but it's not something that I think we should just decide on without you guys talking to the judges first. But again, I'm speaking just for me, but it would kill that stone too of having later meeting, giving people that aren't able to come in in the mornings an opportunity to join those meetings live. Any other comments? So we'll put this on old business for the next meeting, and you guys have an opportunity to talk to the judges on the conclusion of that point. Handbook, if the next group wants to start that up. Commissioner Todd?
Becky, you killed a tree for no reason. It may be my fault because you didn't have a copy of the stuff. Would we please attach Becky in the future? Can somebody please, instead of killing another tree quickly, can we go through the changes that were made?
Barry, you have the list that they wanted changes made to. Maybe we can start from that in the last meeting? I don't have that list, but that's what we were looking for.
I think we can be quick. I'm not looking for any major, just make sure we're in.
Page four. I'm sorry, I left my other one at home, so you're going to have to help me.
What else do I have here? I don't recognize page four, what we changed. It was in the definitions.
Yeah, I think it was just a definition change.
Anything, do you have a copy of the new one in front of you?
I do, I printed out a copy.
May I see that?
So I know there were just a couple of things that you guys had, some pretty minor changes, that we just took out some lines that you guys wanted to take out throughout the book. The 701 and 702, the vacation and sick leave policies were the two that had the most changes. Those are pretty significant changes, and Barry and I sat down and seriously wanted to look through those. There are a couple in here that were more of a legal issue, and Mike and I and Barry had talked about it, and we left those in.
On number, on page four, it was, we just changed the definition a little bit of exempt employee. Or we did not, we did not change that. I think there was a question about it, but we did not change that because it goes along with federal guidelines. Page 15.
So we're not going to, we're not going to log any of our time off by employee with our supervisor?
We added that in under vacation leave. So we did add a sentence under vacation leave. And I think that will address the concern that you had, Nathan, about tracking that. So when you get to that section, we can point that out for you.
Page 15, it was, we've gotten transfers. And I think there was a, we just took out part of it because it was confusing. We changed part of it.
Looks like it was removed completely.
All right. So, page 18. There was a double paragraph, we just took that out.
The compensatory time?
Yes. It was just doubled up, so we took that out.
There are two of the same paragraphs in a row.
Yeah, two.
On page 20, we took out employee long-term disability insurance because we don't have that.
That and then etc.
Okay. Page 21. We took part of it out and we made some changes. There were some kind of double, double things that were talked about twice.
Yeah, section three. Looks like it was removed and another large paragraph.
Page 27. That's the vacation, so that one...
Should we come back to 71 and 72?
We can come back to 27 and 28 because it's changed quite a bit. It's changed and it hasn't changed, I guess, but the wording's changed.
Yeah, 701.
34 and 35. We, that's some that we did not change because of the legalities of that. There was one sentence we changed, but the rest of it, we didn't change because we discussed the legalities of it and felt like it needed to stay the way it was. Michael and Jeannie discussed it.
Under personal time or was it under?
The 34, 35, talking about... Oh, the, I got ahead, I apologize. Unpaid leave of absence. I don't have, I don't have the new one with me, so I think we just, it goes along with the sick leave and made it consistent. The telephone, computers, social media, computers, telephone, that's the part that didn't change because we felt like, they felt like it was legally the way it should be.
I thought we were going to add with cause. We could all have this add with cause.
With cause.
Oh, that was the one, whether you can look at somebody's computer, if county-owned computer, whether you had to have cause or not. My suggestion was is not to require cause because it's county-owned property. There's no expectation of privacy. So because it's a county, county property, you should be able, as a county employer, go in and use that computer at any time to verify. So, you know, you don't want to have cause, and who knows what someone might do? So it gives a supervisor or let's say they have a law enforcement investigation or something.
So there wasn't in there supervisor? That was the thing that we were questioning, it does not include the supervisor? So could we add that in there?
Yeah, I think we did talk about that, and we wanted to give enough flexibility so that, you know, any, the commissioners, if something, or a supervisor would have the ability to do that. So we could add that if it's not in there.
Supervisor of the department?
Uh huh, so we might need to add that.
Right now, it just says the county has the right to monitor. So, can I take in all of those? That would take in law enforcement, supervisors, whoever. Does that make sense? I think that's...
Is that good enough that just the county generally? I do, I don't, I just, I mean, you're not going to have someone kind of out there just wanting, like, you know, you just turn out another department saying, I don't know, look at someone's...
Right.
...here in another department. It's going to be more commissioner or supervisor-driven or maybe of law enforcement, so I can't imagine having other people trying to do that.
Page 48, 49, that's where you asked to put the clerk, the clerk in to get those accident reports, so we put that in there.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So that was changed. On 71, we talked to Michael about the with or without pay pending investigation on an antebaliment policy. Michael felt like we should keep that without pay in there. Even though we can't think of a, we can't think of something right now that you would do that, it may be a possibility somehow that you might be suspended with pay, you might be suspended without pay. So Michael felt like it should stay in there.
Yeah, just like we were talking, we really can't think of any reason why it would be without pay, especially today's age, but whenever you don't think something's going to happen, it does. It's just an option in there that probably won't be used, but...
Page 73. Was talking about the drug testing, who would do it? And I believe we changed that to... I think it says now, I apologize, my computer won't come up. Train supervisor, county or county designee.
So what I talked about on that, a lot of those things we're going to have to do some training on with the DOT policy because you need to educate your supervisors. Obviously, law enforcement knows what to look for to see if there's suspicion that someone may be under the influence, but there needs to be some employee, some supervisory training as to things to look for so you can say, I have a reason to believe that so-and-so may be under the influence of something, and as a result, I'm requesting a urinalus test or testing. So some of that in there is going to require some training, and I would suggest if you adopt the handbook, that we put that on the top of the agenda as far as training goes. And so that you have your supervisors that are educated that know what to watch for. And so that will be a process that we need to do to make sure everybody has that training.
I kind of think the Rothenbridge supervisor is trained.
He probably is.
Is he the only one that does the testing right now? And I think that he's trained to do that testing.
Well, what might happen, let's say you suspect somebody in your department being under the influence, and you're, it may come down to where you just tell them, we'll call in the sheriff's department and say, hey, use some of your drug recognition guys over, or gals, to see what you think, and then type it from there. But it just would be, you know, you still have that baseline training with all your supervisors, and then if something... But it just would be, you know, you still have that baseline training with all your supervisors and then, then if something does come up, you can say, okay, yeah, you have a little training, so if you have enough suspicion of this, then you request one. Or law enforcement, but yeah, I think we can take that in.
And, and most of the time, there's a, a short training for all supervisors of any kind, just what to look for, it's a generic, what to look for in, in your department. And actually is very informative. Um, page seventy-seven is the same, um, we were talking about having one hour per year training. We left that in because, um, we should make sure we get that done.
I also agree with the supervisor training or the employee, either one. Question that I have is, is who administers the training and is it readily available?
So we could tap into one of our sheriffs, the sheriff's department, because they have had that drug recognition training already. They could be the one that would do that for us probably.
I forgot, uh, page fifty-one or fifty-two, where we talked about the understanding kind of commissioners adopt on behalf, we took that out. Because, um, I think we all agree, we don't wanna sign it as such. We also added, on page fifty-two, we added some other department heads to some. That will be using the, the handbook for their employees, like, um, the extension office, public health, some of those people that will be using the handbook, so. I think that's all of those, did I miss something, Nathan? Okay.
So going back to seven oh one and seven oh two, those are the two biggest ones and that's been the most debate for the whole, the whole handbook. So seven oh one deals with, I think that's our vacation, yeah, vacation time. So we changed that pretty significantly, so you wanna take a look at it. The sick leave is probably more in line with what we had with the last draft, uh, but we did make a couple of changes and those were the things that we wanted to see what you guys thought. But with sick leaves and vacation are very different when it comes to benefits and what you are legally obligated to provide to your employees. And so with sick leave, a lot of counties do not even pay out sick leave to their employees when they leave. It's just not something that is paid out right now, you guys have one-third of three hundred and sixty hours at minimum wage that can get paid out for sick leave when someone leaves. And so we left that in the handbook, but we also added in there for any employee after, that are hired after January sixteenth, assuming today would be like a day you would adopt this, whatever day you guys adopt this. That any employee that's hired after that date, we put in there that you would not be able to receive any cash payout for your sick leave. Um, it would just be something that you lose unless you had donated some of that along the way. Um, but we put that in there, didn't know if you guys wanted to go that route, but like I said, a lot of counties just don't even pay out the sick leave. And you guys pay the one-third of the three hundred and sixty that they might have at minimum wage. So that's different. And then the vacation time, you, you are less able to change, you have to pay out benefits for vacation. Um, and so, um, we kept that in there, obviously, that the vacation, can I take a look at that real quick? Just to make sure I can point out what we did. Okay. So, um. So we did the years of service and I just kinda clarified, so it says after the first full month of employment through the end of five years, you get eight hours a month. Beginning sixth, your sixth of employment through the end of ten years, ten, beginning eleven, going to fifteen, beginning sixteen to twenty, and then twenty-one plus is when you get sixteen hours a month. So I tried to clarify that a little bit better because there was this kinda question about zero to one and what that meant. So we did say, one, you have to be here at one full month before you get your first eight hours. So let's say you start in the middle of October, you have to be here the full month in November because you earn your eight hours. You don't get any partial credit for that part of October when you first start, but November you would get eight hours. And so December on your paycheck, it would show eight hours and it would take. So here's where we tried to clarify what, what our situation is now. Um, so there's a, and we left the twelve-month cap and all accumulated vacation must be taken within eighteen months of when it was accumulated. And talking with some of the departments, um. Vera and I felt like we need to, someone needs to go around to all the departments and get an idea of what each department looks like as far as vacation time on the books. Uh, we talked to Jim Hanson with Rothenbridge to kinda get a sense from him. Um, you know, he says he tries to stick with this one-year kinda cap, but they've had overtime and things have been crazy. So we really felt like we needed to sit down with each department, figure out how much vacations on the books and see what we need to do to kinda figure out what that looks like. So here's where we, the big paragraph here, it says, on January first, twenty twenty-four, regular full-time county employees who have worked for more than one year for the county were awarded their vacation hours in a lump sum which they had earned the previous year. So January first this year, you guys give them the, how many ever they earned from the last year, so they got that lump. Then it says employees who have worked less than a year as of January first, twenty twenty-four, and who are not awarded their vacation hours as they earn them. So you have some of those departments that were waiting for them to get that year. So in those situations where they've worked less than a year and they didn't earn them, then they're gonna be immediately granted their vacation hours, so once you adopt this. So if you had somebody that worked eight months so far for the county, their department hadn't given them each month as they earned them, then we're gonna just give them their lump, how much ever they are right now. And then moving forward from January first, all employees will be accruing their vacation hours month to month according to the above chart and can use those hours as they earn them. Please keep in mind that if you use those hours as you earn them, you will not have an accumulated amount to take later. It'll be your responsibility to bank your hours and take and extend a vacation if you so choose. So we're hoping that maybe that clarified kinda what our, our process is. And then, um, here's where we have that sentence, Nathan, it says elected officials and department heads shall, shall track vacation time leave for their exempt and non-exempt employees. So that was kinda the big change that we put in here, was just trying to clarify, you know, how that would look moving forward. I think that was kind of the big piece of the change in the vacation. And the sick, then we left the one-third up to three hundred and twenty hours when they leave with the minimum wage piece of that. Um, and then, then we also added, a separate regular staffs employee hired after January sixteenth, whenever you guys adopt this, shall not receive any payment for any sick leave. So those, that was the big change that we made in that and I didn't know what you guys thought.
So on the vacation, are we giving employees that have been here a long time there yearly? Are you totally taking that out?
So what the thought would be is, so January first hit, and let's say, and, and, so what they get January first each year is what they had earned the previous year. So they kinda get their lump sum of what they earned that previous year, so that was that ninety-six hours, let's say if someone had been here a long time. So January first of this year, everybody got their lump sum from what they had earned the year previous. Now moving forward, you're just gonna start accumulating eight hour, or how many ever hours a month that you make moving forward. And so you, so you're actually gonna get your vacation as you earn them rather than waiting that full year to get that lump sum after you've already earned it for that year. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, maybe Vera, Vera wanna try to explain?
Well, and, and this is where we were making it too hard. Because the, the vacation everybody's been getting in January, you've already earned the year before. Because every, we were holding out that vacation and you had to save it up for a whole year before you got it. So the vacation that you've, everybody got in January, they've already earned it last year. And they earned it one day a month, just like they do now, every, every month they earn a day, but you didn't let them take it till January. So now they have two weeks or three weeks or whatever. Going forward, it's gonna be the same thing, they'll earn a day a month just like they do now, except you will be able to take it if you want to. So if I have three weeks of vacation and I wanna use three weeks and one day, I can take one of those days I've earned for January, come February, I have a day. If you wanna wait till January and have your full vacation like always, then you will, um, nothing will change. If, if you decide to go to Europe and take last year's vacation that you got awarded in January and all of this year's, come next January, you won't have any vacation.
So why can't we just put that in there saying you get the ninety-six hours per year or whatever per year?
That's. That's, that's what it says.
It does say that and there's still ninety-six hours per year, the higher.
You get, you get, you get X amount of hours every month as you work. You earn, you earn your eight hours or ten hours or, or twelve hours or whatever. You earn that. And if you wanna wait till next January and have it all banked again like you do now, that's, nothing will change. If you wanna take one of, two of those days during that year that you've, you've earned, you can.
That's why I'm saying if, if you could just put that in there and, and leave that, they call on this in the handbook as it is, the ninety-six per year, hundred and twenty-some per year. What's the holdup? Why can't it be in there per year?
You're not gonna get a lump sum of ninety-six hours come January every year anymore. You're just gonna earn twelve hours or, you know, sixteen hours that you earned because you've worked your full one years every month. And it comes out to ninety-six hours that you're gonna earn over the year, but you're just getting it monthly. So you don't have to wait till that full year has, you've accumulated all those days for that full year to get your chunk. You're, you just accumulate hourly every month and that's how you would get it. It's not a lump sum that you're gonna get in January, you're just gonna start getting your vacation days as you're around.
It's the same, it just doesn't say ninety-six hours for the year, it says eight hours per month. And you, and that's the way it's always been anyway, you've, you've earned, just like sick leave, you've earned eight hours a month.
Like you, you got, I mean, you're getting, we're just changing the color of money is all it is.
Right, but the way the older people are gonna see it, they're not gonna see it that way. So if we're just changing the color of money, why can't they just get in there?
They are getting the exact same option, it's, it's just they're being granted the benefit instead of being withheld it till the end of the next year.
Right.
They're being granted the benefit of being able to use that throughout the year. So it, and in some ways, it, it may be a benefit to them, it's the same outcome, but it may be more of a benefit to them if they want to, if they need those hours to use.
Right, and they still have that hundred and eighty or eighteen months to use it.
And that's, that might be what we're gonna have to analyze as we go to each department to really see what's on the books. Because when we talked to Jim, he says, you know, I don't know if we can get, if I can use all my time that I've accumulated in eighteen months, I might get a little more time because we've been so busy in shorthand. So I think that stuff we're gonna have to just work through, right, for each department, but, but no, we can still keep that in there at this point. But it is, it's awarding your vacation as you earn it rather than waiting for that full year to then kinda bank it.
And he might be the one that you'll just have to.
Well, and I think this sheriff's. We did, we actually met with Jim, um, on Friday and we went through this concept with him, he said, yeah, it doesn't make sense to me. So he was behind her.
So the people that have been here for twenty-five years, they are still required to accumulate the eight hours per month?
They get sixteen hours a month.
Sorry, sixteen hours, okay. It's just not, you've been here, you get your vacation.
And you're not waiting a year to use it?
Right, I understand. Not till after this, this, this year, they're giving us, everybody's getting it in January, they're gonna get the lump sum in January.
From last year.
It's gonna start next January, they'll start accumulating.
No, it starts this January.
It's accrued after.
They're getting last year's hours this month and you're starting to accrue this month.
And that's where you're asking the department heads to come in and tell you what they've already earned for last year and, and taken.
Because I think what we're gonna find is departments could be very different depending on, like the sheriff's department, it's like, they might have a lot of vacation time on their books. And so it might be where we come back and say, okay, here's how all the departments kinda break down. You guys might wanna consider paying out forty hours of vacation for anybody that has X number of hours just to try to get some of that off the books a little bit. You might also wanna get creative and see if you can get some part-time help in so that people can actually take their vacations, because that's what we're hearing too, is we just don't have the trained staff to fill in. So I can't really give people vacation sometime when they should. So those are the kinda creative things, I think, as we work with each department to figure out how do we best serve them so that their, their employees can, can take their vacation and they can have the staff to fill it when they need it.
And I think it's gonna be, that, that little snippet's gonna be a little time-consuming, which is something we can, you know, a handbook changes, we, you look at it every year. So that would probably be a resolution that we have to do to change maximum hours of carryover vacation. It's never been in there and we, you know, all of a sudden we found, the deeper you go, the more little things like that you need to, uh, do. But as for now, we feel like this is a good thing to start with, it, it clears up some things and we can go from there.
I'll make a motion to approve the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Weston County employee M, but with the one exception, what was it you were gonna amend?
Um, we're gonna add some, like, us and department heads supervising language into the people that, um, watch for people under the influence and training, so I'll add that in.
With the, uh, training for people under the influence being added.
Second. We have a motion, properly seconded, any discussion? Call to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
I feel like we should have confetti.
I know.
We should clap, yeah.
Can we say glory hallelujah?
So maybe move back forward. I just wanna get some clarification, so my thought would be is we'll go in and make those changes and I'll give you guys a good hard copy so you have that. But then my thought would be is, you know, I'd want Mike or I or somebody to go around each department, sit down with each department, go through the handbook, the employees, make sure they understand it and if any question, answer those questions. And then I do think sexual rape harassment training and the training on recognizing people under the influence would probably be the two areas that I would suggest you can tackle first by putting on a little presentation to each department or at least a couple meetings where people can come. So if that's okay with you guys, that's how I'll kinda move forward and, um, obviously we'll need to approach all the electeds and department heads to try to get their signatures on the final draft as well. Say that they, everybody, you know, approve it as well. But if that's okay with you guys, that's how I'll start working on it and then we'll start planning some meetings where the departments just go over everything and do those couple trainings.
I appreciate everyone's hard work on this, Jamie, your hard work.
I can, I just wanna hug you guys. It is, it's what I was like, you just need to.
Thank you. All right, next subject is the door and the port. Commissioner Todd?
We're like forty minutes behind schedule and we got two people on the, I don't know, does it affect you, Tina?
It's, yeah, it's a quick comment, it's not anything to ask for at this time. Previously, in the years past, when COVID hit, twenty twenty, grant money was out for security, court security. I got, I received bids for a courtroom door out of where the, um, circuit court's teller window is. Because it's disruptive to court hearings for the clerk to walk the maze out of the courtroom. We just had it in a jury trial where we had to leave the courtroom, the jurors were staring at us versus paying close attention to the attorney's, um, arguments. I'm not, I know that the budget is not within its means, but I believe these two or three bids that I have received in the past and I feel like the void crying wolf. These people are not gonna take us seriously if I go back again and say, hey, we're ready, when we're not. The COVID money was used for the corp, the double doors on the main floor here, totally appreciate that. However, it was allocated for the door in the courtroom, I received bids twice from White's Construction and Twenty-One Electric, um, and Gilberto. Nothing came about. I don't feel comfortable asking these people again, I, I, I don't know about construction, I, I. I can get a bid, but then again, are we gonna move forward? I just want to explain the necessity of being able to leave that courtroom without disruption. As well as a safety feature for the clerks that sit there, not only myself, my deputies, the circuit court as well. Um, we have, uh, staff attorneys that come with the judges that sit there as well. You can't fit behind the judge's chair to get out of that room. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that as well, I'll keep it in the back of your heads that it's a necessity.
Commissioner Todd?
For the future.
Can you email those quotes again?
Yep, I apologize, I didn't bring them with me.
Well, I'm sure there's gonna be some adjustment, the cost of those anyway.
Oh, yeah, it'll be higher.
Yeah, um, so that's something we're gonna, no matter if we move forward or not, we're gonna have to get an updated. Get on that.
Yeah.
And a historical preservation study will have to be done.
Yes.
Before she gets her bids, so we'll have to get ahold of that board and have them come in.
We'll, you'll get that, okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Todd's right, we are way behind it as, I don't see anything on there that we can't put on hold so we can through up here because she's obviously on the screen. can't put on hold so we could through up here, because she's obviously on the screen. If anyone has any objections, I don't know, but we're gonna jump to that, and then we'll go back to where we were on the order of things. Morning, Drew.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy twenty twenty-four. Thank you. I'll try to make this pithy and, so you can get back to your agenda and hopefully give you a little time back to get caught up. Commissioner, Chairman Taylor, I have to apologize. I didn't realize that there was a new chairman, so we will get that corrected in the Rock Springs letter. Commissioner Huber brought that to my attention, so thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with Rock Springs. You received the draft letter for comments. I do need to make a correction on the name, and then I also, in the CCs, put an H on Uinta, so I need to take that out. Otherwise, I'm willing to answer any questions. Just to give you a little bit of background, I and Fallon Law Office were also retained by the Wyoming County Commissioners Association to do a consistency review with the county natural resource plans, of which you have one, and the BLM's preferred alternative, which was the preservation alternative. We did that for all five county plans. I will be the first one to tell you, it was tedious, it was time-consuming, it was daunting, because every BLM management action, I had to pair with what's in your plan. It could affect energy, wildlife, special designation, so one could have multiple. It was a lot of, it was a lot of time, but I think it's gonna turn out to be very beneficial. And so those were submitted, the five impacted counties are approving those today. MICA is going to submit a letter on behalf of WCCA and include all five of those. We did do this, commissioners, you were part of it, with the Thunder Basin National Grassland Plan. So that was the first time we did a consistency review table. This just was magnified because it was the whole resource management plan revision. So it's the first time we've done it. We'll see how this works. Hopefully, BLM will respond to those areas that are inconsistent and tell us why they cannot be consistent with the county plan. And there's a lot of work in time that's been, that's gone into this. So your letter supports that effort, supports county plans, supports cooperating agency status, and basically recognizes that all of that broke down before this draft D I S came out, and it's not acceptable. So that's where your letter went. If there's any questions I can answer on that, please let me know. I'm happy to do so.
Any questions from the board? There's no questions at this time, Drew. I appreciate you letting us know. I'm sorry we held you up.
Oh, you didn't hold me up. You're just fine. And Becky, I can make those changes and send the final letter to you, which will need to be put on county letterhead if you approve the letter, and signed by the chairman, and then needs to be submitted. So if you have any, by tomorrow. So if you have any questions with that, just reach out to me.
Thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Janie.
I don't know if you wanna vote on that now or later, and then I was gonna give you a quick update on some other issues we're working on together.
Make a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the letter to the, on the Rock Springs art. Updated letter, what you're talking about.
Second.
Resource management plan. And a motion that's properly seconded. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Go ahead.
Great. And just so you know, all five of the northeast counties did sign and submit a letter to the Rock Springs, so that did happen. Next, I just wanna give you a quick update on Sage Grouse. So the preliminary administrative draft to cooperating agencies, of which MICA and I are participating for you all, we did review that and submit comments by December twenty-ninth, so that did happen. I will say, we have seen some positive movement with the BLM here in the last month. So I am hopeful that some of the things that we're working on are gonna make it into the draft D I S. There are a few things that were very deficient. They weren't good information. BLM is gonna revise those and let us see it again as the administrative draft before before the draft D I S comes out. So I just wanted to let you know we're seeing a little bit of improvement in the coordination. Can't really talk about details in the public because it's still a preliminary draft, but I did want you to know that we're seeing some things move in that direction. Are there any questions on Sage Grouse?
No questions.
Okay.
No other question?
I'm gonna move on to, oh, yeah.
No, we're good.
Okay, I wanna move on to the Forest Service really quick. The final assessments did come out. I have not had the chance to review those yet. I know Janie has started her review, and our team is starting to review. I have not had the chance because I've been embroiled in Rock Springs, Sage Grouse, and Solar, but I will get to those. The Forest Service is indicating that we may be delayed even a bit further. They were looking at the notice of intent being published in the Federal Register, probably late winter, early spring, which told me around April. Now we've got this old growth E I S that's now coming out that's going to affect a hundred and twenty-eight Forest Service land use plans across the country. All of our forests in Wyoming will be affected by this plan. There are new different definitions of old growth. There's some things in there. We're very concerned about the broad implications this plan could have. It will also probably impact our Black Hills National Forest Plan Revision, because it is gonna be an E I S that will be a plan amendment to that. So the Forest Service is now trying to figure out the mechanics of it. This old growth E I S is on a fast track. We were not asked to participate as cooperating agencies, and it's an E I S. We should have been asked to participate as cooperating agencies. MICA has written a letter asking or requesting that we be cooperating agencies at the table, and we're waiting for a response back from headquarters. They're looking at, so the scoping comments are due by February second. With your approval, I will be drafting scoping comments for you to get you in the door. The draft D I S is scheduled to come out in May with a final coming out in January, or a record of decision in January of twenty-five. So it's on a very fast track. We've got a short period of time. I am working with WCCA to determine if this is another effort like Sage Grouse where we should just get the N R P funding from the governor to WCCA, and that WCCA would retain consultants to work the issue on a statewide effort, so you would be asked to pay a percentage of that. I'm giving you a heads up because you're probably gonna see some correspondence from MICA just as soon as he confirms those conversations with the governor's office. So not a lot, Christine, can you ask this? So not a lot to report on yet, but would you like me to draft a letter for you regarding the scoping notice? And then you will be hearing from MICA on whether or not you want to participate in that effort on, on a statewide basis.
I would be in favor of having Drew draft a letter for us. I mean, it's she's more familiar with every, you know, the whole aspect of this thing. She's been involved with it from the ground up. She did very good about keeping us informed on, but with her expertise and experience, I would be more comfortable having her draft it up for us.
Do you need a motion?
I'd make that informal motion, too.
Second.
So we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor of Drew doing up a letter for, on our behalf, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Drew.
Thanks, commissioners. I will be working on that.
One other question?
I will. Go ahead.
I can't speak for the whole board, but I would be, I would feel comfortable moving forward, having the WCCA request an N R P funding and support that, having them go forward, because this is gonna affect every county in the state, and having the WCCA that spearheaded that will keep everybody informed and on the same page. I think we stand a better chance of getting something done on a united front. So I would just, I don't know if we needed it in a, you know, a formal motion or anything like that, but I would just tend on that we support that effect, knowing there's gonna be some fees to pay on our end of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagner. I, I will relay that message to MICA. He has received a positive response from several counties across the state. So I think we're, we're just trying to figure out how to most effectively and efficiently do this with the resources that we have. So I'm sure that you'll be receiving some correspondence, and I do appreciate your support. Thank you. I will be drafting similar letters for all five of my counties in the Northeast just to get us in the door on scoping. I don't really have any updates on BLM. They, I have a call into BLM, but I haven't, they haven't heard back on where we're at with that. I suspect that we'll be having cooperating agency meetings soon, and I have no update on Thunder Basin. Janie, did you have anything to add on the assessments for the Forest Service?
Yes, I did. You can hear me okay? Okay. When I met with the, the Cook County Commissioners a couple weeks ago, I strongly suggested that they host a public meeting to talk about these assessments. It is not a Forest Service meeting. It is, it is just general knowledge, and I'm really urging the Weston County Commissioners to attend. I will be working with your Farm Bureau, Conservation District, and others in that area. I'm sorry, I can't have another meeting down in Weston. I'm looking at knee surgery in the middle of February. I have to hurry and get this stuff done. This meeting will be held in the Cook County Courthouse basement, February eighth, from six to eight. I don't know if we're gonna have a virtual option or not, but it's just informative. We have speakers from timber industry and from grazing, and it's, it's it's going to prepare your citizens to be able to make good comments when the Forest Service has their meetings. Drew mentioned that I've been reading the assessments. I read economics. Wyoming's pretty much ignored in this so far, at least in that chapter. They don't mention the Weston County Resource Plan, or your land use plan, or how this would affect Weston. So I will keep slogging through this thing and making notes, and I'll be reporting back to you, but it'd be really important if, if you guys could come on the eighth from six to eight P M and kind of get an idea of, of where this is headed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Janie. Is the public invited to that meeting?
Is the public invited to that meeting?
Oh, absolutely. We want them to come, and it's not gonna be sitting there listening to speakers for two hours. It's gonna be like, you know, you guys can talk to your grazing people. I really would like those who hold forest grazing leases to attend, because the more input, the better. And we will, like I said, we'll have people from the timber industry, so if you got loggers in your community, have them come and listen to what, to listen to these people's opinions. So it's more of a, just a, what do you know? How are you reading this? So yes, please, everybody come. I will be putting that in your, in your local papers also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, commissioners, that concludes our report. I will be forwarding letters. The scoping letters for old growth will be due on February second, and I was trying to look and see what date your meeting was. I think I can get it to you before your first meeting of the month. Or is that on the sixth? Well, yeah, the second's on a Friday, so do you need to do anything to for approval of that or for any special considerations? Because it will be before your next meeting.
Drew, will that require chairman's signature? That letter?
Yes, it will. It will be for the public record. It will be scoping comments.
I was just trying to see how we could do that. I would be outraged to do that, but I'd like, like to see the letter before we do that.
I will leave the mechanics to you. I, I'm not sure how you'll do that either, but I did wanna bring it to your attention that it will, it will be due before your next meeting in February.
Could we make a motion on approving it after more or less signing the check on the front side?
You're signing blank, you're signing a blank check without
I mean, that's what it is.
Page the order up or we mount out, that's the problem. I trust, I trust Drew, but, you know, and the legal end, I'll let you put some wording in there that would just shoot us in the foot, so. We'll figure it out and can for that somehow.
Drew, we'll get back to you on that as soon as we get the, the letter, then we'll, we'll figure that out, okay?
Sounds good. Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning. I appreciate you, and we'll be getting back to you shortly.
Thanks, Drew. Appreciate it, Janie.
Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Trying to get back on track here with this. Our next subject was the county boards under full business.
Just quick, I think the letter went out to everyone that I suggested instead of setting a, a schedule for the volunteer boards to come in, because their schedules aren't always gonna meet our schedule. So instead of having a schedule set for them to invite them in, I felt like maybe we should just send out a general letter saying we welcome them to come, how to get on the agenda, and then, and then kind of put the ball in their court. That way they feel free to come when it's convenient for them.
Did you have a copy of that?
My computer won't open. But I did send it, I sent it to everybody.
Does everyone, did you send it to everybody?
Yes.
Does everyone see the letter? I, I saw it, but
Did you take, did I take a look at it? And we can print that out. Maybe we can print that out and assign it later this afternoon. It'd be nice. I felt like it would be nice if we all signed it. And then Becky could help us if she would, send them out to the volunteer boards.
So we'll, in order to get this agenda called back up, we'll put it at the end and bring it back up again after Aaron has two o'clock. Okay. Any objections to moving new business to the end of the meeting so we can get back on schedule? I know there's a lot on there. I realize that I'm not as efficient, but we'll get there. Any objections to that? Okay. Ten fifteen, we're leaving the pass and we're calling it off. Hiring freeze, recession. Okay. 10:15, we're going to pass a report on hiring freeze discussion. Library will, got it. All right. Library did discussion.
Congratulations, Michael.
Well, thank, thank, thank. He's adorable. All right, I got two bids in front of you. One from Powder River, one from GNR Controls. GNR Controls wouldn't give me a bid on American Issues. They didn't want to step on Powder River's toes, I guess. But their control bid is for $78,000, plus they wanted another $1,000 a year to access the software. Whereas Powder River is going, coming in at a $74,833. And they're, they did not see anything on theirs regarding yearly fee for the view portal. But on Powder River, they also added, if we consider putting in air conditioning into the basement over there, that'd be an additional $46,394. As far as the controls go, they're the most necessary at this point. Gets rid of that air compressor that's about to die over there. It allows the actuators to actually work and by heat and air throughout the building. Right now, I've got actuators that aren't working and I've got no way to get them working through the pneumatic system.
This new system, that'll get rid of all the old pneumatic and all the electronic.
It'll all be digital.
Yep. And this bid, we got these two different bids here, the GNR and the Powder River. The $78,000 and the $74,000, them are the comparable bids.
Yes.
And then the extras.
Yeah, additional.
And you, you also said that the equipment that's in there won't be removed. It'll just be bypassed?
I would believe so, but I can talk to, Powder River's going to be out this week. I can speak with Brandon on that.
I don't, I don't know if there's any additional monies in that or not, but you're going to have dead equipment there, taking up space, basically.
Right. There's, it's really one panel on the wall, the circuit box on the wall, and the air compressor.
This is not, they're not changing out all the, they're just basically changing out all the controls.
All the controls, yeah. So again, rid of the pneumatic system throughout controlling the actuators to a digital control system.
This bid says remove existing basement air handling unit.
That's if we do the air conditioning.
You're welcome. I'll provide you the details. You tell me what you want to do.
Well, the GNR, to me, the, you know, it's a little bit more expensive, but I guess the $1,000 a year annual feels a little bit like outside to me. It feels like that could be something that could, could go up or down at their pleasure and, and keep you tied to something maybe you don't want to be tied to.
Excluding the price of the bids and you working with both companies to get these Brandon, how do you feel about either company? You've got one that.
Well, after looking at the bids, I mean, Powder River's done all our work here. They're pretty responsive as far as when we call them to get them out. And I didn't see anything regarding $1,000 a year that we're going to have to pay to actually use our own system. That's, that's the other part that got me on the bids. I didn't like that from GNR was the excess yearly fees.
Is there a moisture problem in that basement?
Right at this moment, there is.
Well, we put air conditioning in that basement would help alleviate some of the moisture problems too.
Well, right now, we've got a water issue with the whole library, so.
Right again. At least the humidity level.
Right.
It would help control that in the summertime.
And that scoped down from Powder River's last bid where it was over $200,000 because they were wanting to replace the air handle that upstairs and the two AC units outside, which are all working. So I see no reason to start ripping down stuff that's working right now.
We've got a boiler in there for heat.
We have a boiler for heat. Boiler's working good. We do have one pump on the second line that's going to need replaced, which from the research I've done, it's about 12, the $2,000 for the pump and then whatever plumber's going to charge us to re-put it in.
I missed something. I guess. So two apples to apples here. It's just, is it just the top part of Powder River's?
Yes, it matches up with the GNR.
And, okay. And GNR's out of rapid, is that what that is?
Yes.
So the secondary part of Powder River's, was that something we were just kind of spit on also?
Well, that's what the library would like. Air conditioning added to the basement, so I just had it as well.
Because if we, I mean, if we do, if we use building and grounds, if we do the total, I mean, it's almost going to run six months through the year. And that's almost the entire amount in buildings and grounds. But.
Like I said, the controls are definitely needed right now.
Yeah.
We can get by probably another year with the AC. We just have a little portable one I put in there in the summer, but.
Do you know if we don't go with the AC, will that affect the top bid or?
I believe so. That's why they sectioned it out.
Okay. Then going down the road, it won't, if we do go with air conditioning later date, it won't, it'll tie right into what they're bringing.
Yes, it should. You know, obviously, they might have to add another control unit for the AC.
Yeah.
You mentioned the control units might have to be replaced. So at the time of adding on the AC later.
No, they just have to probably add a circuit into an existing control for that basement.
Nothing on the initial would have to be replaced in any case.
I guess I'm missing what you're asking.
Okay. Like control units that, that are installed on the $74,033, no materials or, or instruments would need to be replaced in the addition of the air conditioning.
No, no.
Okay. I think if you're very smart and move forward with this, I think I have a caution. I think we should bank some of the, the rest of the money in the event something else happens in the next six months and then put this latter portion, think real hard about that towards the end of the year, if not in our next budget session.
So to make sure I understand, so you're saying taking out of buildings and building and grounds for the first portion, and then it would be with budget time and set aside money for the second half?
I think it would be wise. We got a ramp that's about to be torn off a building and we don't know what that's going to look like at this point in time. It could have additional costs associated with it. And who knows what else is going to pop up its head in the next six or seven months until June. And the closer we get to the end of the year, I think it might leave us some leeway. If, if the air conditioning can weigh, which obviously it can right now, I think maybe the closer we get to budget time, maybe we, if, if, if everything's kosher like you think it is, I don't see why we wouldn't put that on the back burner and maybe add it to the calendar for say, May or something. If you can add that to them either. So. I move we approve Powder River heating and air conditioning bid for $74,833. I'm going to have building and grounds with the consideration at a later date of the additional air conditioning.
I second that.
We have a motion to improperly second. Any other discussion?
You designated building and grounds right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
I would just like some clarification on the hiring slash raises freeze. Current employees were still on a freeze to increase wages. As I have it in the budget, in my budget to increase. However, that brings me to the top of my budget. But I do have it in there. I've, I've done the math. And are we still, we're, this is the last page here as of May 2022?
From, from what I remember and understand, it was just a hiring freeze for any additional people. If you already budgeted for those increases, then, someone correct me if, if you had already budgeted for those increases, it was okay. I think the one thing that was in question in the library, didn't have any employees with benefits. So we discussed that if they needed to hire somebody that needed benefits, a new person in that would be something.
I believe that to be, the, the language of the hiring freeze was for the sole purpose of the asking of additional funds for those positions. I believe that's what.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm just going to stay here because I'm next again.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification on that. I appreciate that. Juror prepaid discussion, that is one of the major issues with the jurors. We see it as a civic duty. They see it as an inconvenience and to not be paid within at least that week, making them wait for vouchers to be signed and then distributed, the payment distributed the next month is pushing it. I'd like to see if we can get prepaid for any and all juror, juror trials moving forward.
Can you, can you bring them, by prepaid you mean, you will know the juror in advance?
Correct.
You will know, how are you going to know like time and mileage and things like that?
We, we get the vouchers prepared. It's the, only the either seven or 13 that are chosen that we will not know because inevitably, we don't know the length of the trial. It could be set for three days. It could go to five. But we know, and, and it varies too depending on the case type as to the amount of jurors. A higher profile of case, 65 people will be called in, a lower 45, a six man jury, 20 to 30 people. But we do have those invoices or vouchers prepared beforehand. We just don't tally until the chosen ones are chosen.
This is pre-trial?
We bring the vouchers down to Becky after the trial is done.
Okay.
And then hopefully be able to voucher and pay them within that name or next versus a month and a half. Our last jury trial, we had, those people aren't going to get paid until February. And that was on the 8th. That was one of the issues, issues I was running into besides the disruption because the clerk had to keep going.
It's, it's a little misleading on prepaid. Basically, you had authorization to pay them immediately.
Correct. Yes, yes.
I, I personally don't have a problem with that. Knowing, you know, that it, them people are coming in, I mean, that's in any form, taking them off work. I, I would have a problem with authorizing immediate pay, not prepaid, immediate pay. You know, have them sign the vouchers when they're, while they're there, doing their, when their trial's over, they find their vouchers, what to do to them?
We have them sign them before it's even started. And then we can start tallying to the best of our knowledge.
As soon as trial, they will process the vouchers.
Yep.
I don't, I see that would be a benefit to people for the next meeting.
Well, because depending on when it is, if they have their trial the day right after you guys meet and sign vouchers, it could be over a month before you guys meet again to approve those vouchers. And then processing the, the mail, it could be well over a month before those guys.
And that is happening. We've got several phone calls. I thought I was getting paid from the service. Just sit tight. It's coming.
And it's not likely we're not going to pay them. We know, we know, we know we're obligated to pay them.
Yes.
Doing that due to.
Yes. It's just the timing of.
So this way, you guys are doing the motion in a meeting, any jurors from here on out, it's okay that she brings the voucher down. It's already been authorized in a commissioner meeting.
I would make that in the motion you just, you just described. You get the, make motion to authorize immediate payment of jurors after the trial.
Work ahead and process them immediately.
Second.
Thank you so much. And just real quick backtracking on my, oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to improperly second it on the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Soft spoken Chairman, sorry. Just a little backtrack on my comment earlier. One of the issues also, I don't want to call them complaints, issues that the jurors had. Since the remodel, they have taken space away from the lobby. We can't have them go into the courtroom until everyone is seated. So it's a cluster up there with, we had 65 people this last jury trial. I would like to ask if we could possibly have the Sheriff's Department down here with a table, checking them in, have their vouchers signed, come up and we can, and another deputy will put them in the courtroom.
Motion passed. Put out for this room to do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
It was a pleasure to work. And then as far as like your other concern with that door, there's still 18,000 courthouse repairs up there, so.
I, I will go get those.
I think.
Whoops.
Something electrical keeps coming to mind that was a major issue.
It was. It was. But then when 21 electric came back, he said, we don't have to do that. We don't have to dismantle that, that floor.
Be good to see.
I'd like to have them back again to verify, clarify. And it was Josh who came that last time and said, we're not going to have to do that. We'll just have to just, because the floors are not level. The teller room for a circuit court is a little higher than what's in the hallway, I believe.
Cause something's going to drop.
Yeah.
There's a drop.
There's a drop.
What the whole of well.
But I certainly can get those bid who works out again. Like I said, though, I, I feel like the little boy who's crying wolf with these people. And maybe with someone. and maybe with someone, someone different, inquiring, that would be great.
Yes, I remember I was, was kinda gonna move forward with it, then we put it on hold, because there was gonna be some electrical issues.
Right.
And then, now that it's not.
I, I don't, I believe the last time, they told me they didn't have to do that. But I will, I'll get those quotes out in a moment. Perfect, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next up, road maintenance. Mark Myers.
Yeah. Just a couple quick questions for you guys today, who's responsible for the road ma- street maintenance in Osage?
Are you aware of the board of directors? Cause Osage is a, a service and improvement for districts. Are you aware of the board of directors currently?
Yeah, Osage?
Yeah.
Not familiar, you mean who's on the board of directors in Osage? Yeah, I'm familiar with them, I've been to their leagues.
Okay, wow. That's, that's your path. The state statute, I think it's eighteen twelve, one twelve, it's, it's the power of the district, that they're in control of maintenance of that four, people within that service and improvement of the street.
I see, and I live on Magru Street out there, and that's where that sewer runs, that enclosed system, runs right down the middle of the street. And I haul twenty-five, thirty ton of gravel in there, on my stretch, where the street is last, third of that fall, because I know it's coming, this spring, when the runoff comes. Uh, because of that sewer running down the middle of that street like that, that runoff just cuts big grooves on both sides of that, them sewer, them manholes, all the way down, and I mean, they're, I just call it Canyon Street last fall, because it cuts and plumb to bedrock. And, I mean, they're deep, and I went in there, and I, I took my little pickup trailer, and I hauled in twenty-five, thirty ton, I got your seats right here. Anybody like to look at them? Ton and a ton. And, so, uh, I realized, it was a fool's errand, basically. But, uh, cause I always, I, I go haul some gravel, and I tell the gal there at the scale, I need three more loads, and three more loads later, I'd come in there, I need three more loads, and, so I always gonna need three more loads, but, uh, shouldn't there be some maintenance out there? I see the neighbor, he's got him skid steer, and I was hauling the gravel in there, he was scooping gravel over there by the church, hauling it over on his street, his street's nice and smooth, but I haven't seen anything done on any, any other streets, but, but that one, where he.
About, about twelve years ago, or fifteen, it's been a number of years, the district asked the county to maintain one of the roads there within that district, and the county played hook to manhole cover. And damaged the manhole cover, so then, we got a bill from the district to repair the manhole after, and, and this was just out of, I mean, it's not the responsibility of the county, so that's where you, I guess you gotta understand, it's a district issue, and, and unfortunately, that's, it's a sticky deal for you, because you're on one of these roads, you've gotta get in front of that board of directors, or.
I've been in front.
I, I mean, I, I, I guess, from the county perspective, I don't know what we can do for you, I guess. Within that district, they've, I mean, that was a vote that was held by the majority of the people in that district, be a part of that district, and, and it's very explicit in state statute, what the requirements of that district are, and, and part of those requirements are maintenance of the roads, to widen them, to upkeep them, your water, your, your sewer are part of those statutes to maintain. That board is, that's, that's where you need to start, if you can.
Well, I'll start again there. Uh, it, it just appears to me that, uh, that along with other things, out there, uh, they call it freedom out there, I've talked to them people, it's, it's freedom, they say, we, we don't have any rules and regu- stupid regulations out here, we're free. And so that's, that's where it's at out there, they, they don't, they don't want nobody in there causing anything, they just wanna stack their junk ten foot high, and as I see them stacking it all around my place, uh, I see my property value going down as their junk piles get higher, and it's all around, and I'm not complaining so much about that, is that, uh, nobody seems to care. But the streets, I believe, should be maintained, I guess, I'll have to go and talk to them again, but I have, and, and I've addressed them on a couple other things out there. Uh, it's the only place I've ever been in where the water and the sewer are separate. Most generally, your water and the sewer bill go together, when you pay your water, you pay your sewer. Now, when I moved in there, three years ago, there was, four years of back sewer. When you move away, or if you go someplace, you're gonna be gone for a while, you can shut your water off, but you can never shut that sewer off. They don't, they don't shut the sewer off, so when, like, I came in there, I bought that place, it was four years of back sewer. And they threatened to put a boot in my sewer, when I argued about that, that's not my bill. Why should I have to pay that? I've got that receipt a year or two, uh, it was almost fourteen hundred dollars that I paid, everybody's gotta pay it. And, so, with that, I don't think it's, it's right, that, that, uh, we have to pay that, and, and, uh, and there's no, no maintenance on anything out there that I see. I just find that money goes through that place, and I don't see where anybody goes to any maintenance or anything to the people on them streets or anything. I, I, uh, I just wanted to address this with you folks, I, I, uh, I've talked to the powers that be out there, and, uh, you know, I addressed the guy, I'm not gonna mention any names here, he said, yeah, you should, I said, I, when I pay a bill, I, I need a receipt. And, yeah, you should have a receipt, so I went to the meeting, well, when I got to the meeting, that changed. You know, they couldn't afford to pay a receipt out. I said, well, I pay quarterly, that's four receipts a year, and I know people out here pay yearly, that's one receipt. We can't afford to give out receipts, see? So there's no record on them sewers, on that sewer, past sewer bill, there's no, there's no records, there's no receipts. I've paid mine on the twentieth of the month now, and then every three, every quarter, I pay my, my sewer, and I've always paid it on the twentieth, so it's right there together, water, and then sewer, April, May, June, or June, July, or July, August, whatever, pay it every quarter, and that way I can keep track of it, because, uh, people, when you talk to them out there, oh, they're trying to say we, I owe four hundred dollars back sewer, and I ain't got, I'll have to go through my checkbook, I mean, we don't get a receipt for a bill we pay on the sewer.
Sorry, but, if I was you.
I've looked it up.
Yeah, I would get that title eighteen in front of you, and, and look at it extensively, and go in front of that board of directors and discuss a lot of them.
They don't have, as long as they're not incorporated into the county here, they don't have to pay, they don't have to do anything. They get to do whatever they want out there, they don't have to pay a receipt on the sewer. They don't. Well, that's a lot, that's what I get.
I think that, uh, I could argue with them on keeping good trace of, of what's being paid by the individuals within that district, but I would start there, and I understand you're upset, and I feel, feel for you, I really do, and I would reach out to other individuals within your district that are getting potentially the same kind of service, and, and try to get in front of the board, and see if you can make some changes, I mean, if it's something beneficial.
So there's, uh, nothing really anybody can do by other than just talking to the powers that be out there and trying to get them to. Like I said, I haul point five, thirty ton of gravel in there, a ton and a ton last fall. I think what Commissioner Todd's saying is, is that it, it starts with them, and, and, and we under- like you said, we, we understand your situation, we appreciate you coming in, letting us know about it, but maybe if a handful of you got together with those same, took it to that board, it might get a little bit further on it, but it's not anything that we as a county can involve in at this point.
Well, it's part of what's in common.
Sir, can I, can I give you my phone number, and did you reach out to me? We can discuss it further, and, and I'll see if I can help you find something that can let you something.
You bet. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Yeah, I've been there three years old.
Good job.
You're Nathan?
Yeah. We'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Nathan.
You bet.
All right. Thanks, Marvin, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Legislature up there. Is that us?
Oh.
No sneeze. No sewer water discussion or anything like that, for me, I'm not incorporated yet, but, see how that goes.
Good morning.
Worth it, yeah. Good morning, everyone. You're sitting on the end, you wanna sit in the middle, or you, it looks like you don't get along, we can do that. Um, Sherry, stop, well, there, Sherry, okay, yeah, I got her your number, and they got her hooked up.
Good morning, everyone.
What's your name?
Good morning. Yeah, I assume you can hear me, thank you for letting me join via Zoom, I really appreciate it, we're broke down in Sheridan, so our pickup is by the side of the road.
Yeah, she was taken off from Sheridan, she said this morning, had meetings over there, and just pulled out past the Maverick, up the entrance, onto the I ninety, and or A twenty-five, whatever was the interstate, and they've just shut off, so it's parked her and Cory there, so fortunately, they can zoom in, so we still get heavy input from our, from our senators, so, um, I guess, I'll defer to Mr. Schley, although he was here before me.
Well, I, I, I guess, the main thing, reason we came in and have this meeting is just to hear from you guys, what, what you feel is important for for us to know going down into the session. I mean, you know, the, one of the big, big items that's definitely gonna be happening down there is stuff on taxes, and so, there's a lot, several bills coming up for tax reform, possibly, and, um, but that's, I guess with that, I'm just kinda, unless Chip has something else, or Sherry something they wanna add, before we turn over you guys for questions or comments, or.
Don't Sherry first, I can follow up.
What, what do you?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I would, I, I, did you say that you wanted me to speak now?
If, if you have anything you would like to address before we just get feedback from them.
Sure, no, I, we just want to hear what, um, you guys are tracking and looking at as, as our local electeds, we were there to serve you and to help you with issues you're facing. Um, there are two eminent domain bills up in the egg committee that revise how we deal with collector lines and eminent domain, I would hope uh, to hear your feedback on those as they move through the process in the egg committee. We're also doing some more work with state lands and their leasing processes, and regarding grace periods, some of that. The projects coming through the omnibus water look good and are in good shape, and we're even looking at putting a few more dollars from the general fund in, into some of those projects, none pertaining to Weston County, but if you wanna look those over and give any comments, we're sure open to any of the bills we'll be seeing, and we look forward to working with you as a team through this legislative session.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I'll start off, I mean, you know, the biggest thing in, in last session too, is the tax reform stuff, you know, I would like caution legislators, be careful on the tax reform, that it doesn't take away from the financial challenge counties, you know, a lot of the counties can afford to give up some of their tax money, cause they're getting money off of, you know, royalties and other things, but the financial challenge counties, you know, we're all aware of, you know, it's, every dollar you take away from us, we gotta make up somewhere else, you know? That's, that's one of my big concerns on it, and the other is, uh, unfunded mandates that come out of Cheyenne. Title twenty-five is one of our big ones, you know, we're, we're obligated to pay that, but we have no way of recouping it, and it was mandated out of Cheyenne, but we pay those.
Bring me up to speak, Title twenty-five, if you can elaborate on that.
Uh, I'm having issues at home, and a little domestic violence or something, sheriff's there, police there, it's like, I feel like killing myself instantly. You're Title twenty-five, you're suicidal, you go into custody, and you get shipped to Casper. We are mandated to pay all the transfer fees and everything, and that came out of Cheyenne. We have no way of recouping that, but we're up to, it's on the county's bill to pay it.
Is that pretty consistently expanding on the amount of incidents you're having?
Although, Jeannie, yes, she'll address that, yes, that is continually going up every year.
Maybe if I could, I'm Jeannie Stone, I'm a deputy county attorney here, and so we deal with the, this called involuntary commitments, so Title twenty-five is under, uh, the twenty-five code and the statutes, but anytime there's someone who is a danger to themselves or someone else, and they have a mental health issue, then they can be Title twenty-five, meaning involuntarily committed to a hospital because of their mental health needs. And a lot of times you'll have someone that might have one of those incidences, and they're willing to voluntarily check them in, and those are things that we don't have to pay for as a county, cause it's on their own insurance or on self-pay, but when you have individuals who have mental health issues, it's mandated that, and they won't go, and they need this criteria, then they go to the, our hospital. And sometimes they're taken here, sometimes they're taken into a Gillette hospital, sometimes they go down to Casper, because Casper has more of a mental health facility that they can deal with them, but typically, the first seventy-two hours that someone is, um, in custody, or in the hospital, that financial obligation is on the county. Once they're there and they are out, maybe go to the state hospital for longer term care, if that's what's ordered, then that financial burden shifts to the state. Um, but there's that big, that's that timeframe, the seventy-two hours when they initially get booked in to the hospital, that falls to the county, and then there's a couple additional days that might get tacked in there, so it could add up pretty quickly, and, uh, just depending upon how many of those involuntary commitments you have a year, um, it can get kinda spendy, so.
Also, with that Title twenty-five, it seems to be, it is a problem on the front side, but there's, uh, entities that are involved that, that magnify this, uh, the reliance of uh, local ambulance, ambulance service, uh, say, we do have a Title twenty-fiver, and, uh, we don't have enough buses for a transfer, yet the doctor requests that this, this patient be transferred within the hour, uh, that could constitute a lifeline, which is also the expense of the county. So just, it magnifies, it can be magnified, it has in the past. Even though the flight, the patient, uh, isn't a life, in need of the lifeline, that is what the request of the doctor is, and so that's the only option. So it could, it could elevate to an eighty thousand dollar flight, at the expense of the county.
And so the smaller counties obviously don't have the hospital systems like the other communities do around the state, and so we end up having someone that gets taken to our local hospital, but because they don't deal and don't have a warrant specific for mental health patients, they get shipped under places, and that's where you start seeing this lifeline thing, or an ambulance service has to take them to Casper or somewhere else.
Mostly Casper, and it is detrimental to Weston County, because we have nowhere to put them.
Do you have a figure on what its cost is, even this last year?
There was more up to fifteen, I believe, was last year.
Fifteen separate instances?
Incidences.
Is there, is there any kind of a cost attached to that?
Yeah.
I mean, would it be something, of course, you could get that number.
We can get it to you.
Oh, yes, we can.
I'd be curious, no.
Last year was a large amount, and we're already at a large amount.
And so this has been a discussion, I've been a county attorney, in a county attorney capacity for twenty-eight years, and this has been a discussion since the very beginning, when I started, and it never quite gets, it never gets revolved, and maybe, and the difficulty you have is every county does their Title twenty-fives differently. is every county does their Title 25s differently. So it's hard to talk apples to apples when you meet with different communities and say, okay, well, we have a big system. We've made a deal with our hospitals, it only costs us $3,000 a day, where you might have, smaller communities have to ship them out and they're only gonna give them a $4,500, they're gonna give them a $4,500 rate a day cost. So every community has to piecemeal their mental health services together because they look so different, and, and different people do different things around each county. So that's been the difficulty in trying to come up with a statewide plan is because every county does it so different, that it's hard to kind of everybody get together and start talking apples to apples.
Sherry? What, who would a person even start that conversation with on either side? Is that Department of Health? Is that what we need to start looking into that? Or how would a person even approach putting some information together and kind of finding out what the ground of that beginning and kind of where it's headed and what the, what the future looks like for it? Because, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering with your seniority in the Senate and the, and the House, do you recall kind of what the groundwork that was laid in setting this up and how did this come about? And how did we get to where we're at right now with that? Do you have any insights into that?
No, I was going to ask those same questions as far as who is it billed through? I mean, who do you pay? What department are we talking about? What are your averages? Because Goshen County brought this up with Representative Schlegel and myself in our meeting with them. I know it's particularly an issue for us as hardship counties, as well as looking at the property tax issue and reducing our already taxed budgets on our, in our hardship counties on this side of the state. So if you could answer, who, I mean, who does that come through? What statutory reference is, who, who are, who are we working with in Title 25? Is it Department of Health? Who, who are you, who is that program running through?
It's, it's Department of Health, and it's 2510101 is where it starts in the statutes. And there is a, there, I think there's a standing committee, I mean, it's been in place for a long time, that actually is working on this issue pretty regularly. So if you guys ask around, you can pipe your, what group it is that you need to tap into, because it's, it's a constant discussion. I think last year, a year before, they had a committee that was working on it, and then everybody kind of throws their hands up and walks away because it's so complicated. So there is a group out there and within your guys' group that has been working on this, just to figure out what group that is.
Okay.
So...
Okay, we can, we can talk to the Labor Health Committee. It would probably be there, under their purview. And so we'll check in with them and see if they have anything coming on that. And then we'll, we'll do some inquiry into this.
And it might be under the judiciary as well. That might be the committee that it's under.
Oh, okay. All right.
So already from July 1st till now, we have spent $18,091.90.
And to let you know, it's typically the same individuals that come over and over and over again. So it's not a big, huge need that you have, but it's the same individuals in your community who have mental health issues. And unfortunately, because we don't have a good comprehensive mental health system within the state at different levels of care, people go into the hospital, they might get prescribed some medication, they get kicked out after three days because they're doing better. But there's, there's some community health resources that are out there in a lot of communities, some have it, some don't. And so it's kind of a revolving door. So it's really looking at a big comprehensive plan for mental health within the state, so that hopefully you can shorten the, or lengthen the amount of time that individuals in this situation are coming to the hospital. If you can keep them out there a little longer and doing better, it's gonna cut down on your cost. But it's the same individuals typically that are kind of in this revolving door with the services.
And kind of a side note for us on it, it's a problem that's, I would think it's not just our county that has this kind of problem, but our ambulance service, you know, budgetary wise, we've had to cut things. The company that does our ambulance service, now, we only have one pretty much full-time staffed ambulance, and then another one that's can be here fairly quickly. But depending on, on this patient, the Title 25 patient, that could take up that one ambulance. And so then, that also puts our, our community and county at risk in another way. Because if they're traveling in an ambulance to Casper, that's, you know, we're talking a whole day, probably eight hours that they're tied up, which puts the rest, rest of our citizens at, at risk.
Okay, quick question to all of you. If you were king for the day, what would you do? I mean, based on what you're dealing with and what you've had to work through and the issues, your preference would be what? I mean, I mean, nothing's off the table. You, you can decide how to fix this. What would your suggestion be?
Certainly, certainly our county not have to pay the expense of these Title 25s because it's just one more thing that's draining, draining our budget.
My suggestion would be is to try to have the Wyoming State Hospital have a budget for Title 25s for all the counties. And so it'd be a state-funded funding stream that would pay out the hospital bills for different counties for these Title 25s. The other piece would, and they looked at it at one point when I sat in that group, was looking at regionalized mental health services. So you may not have mental health in every community, but you might have five or six different pockets within the state that all the counties could utilize, so that their Title 25s could go to that hospital, and then maybe that hospital is funded primarily by the state, rather than like county-funded hospitals or private pay hospitals. So that might be another idea. But really getting the state hospital to have a fund that would pay the initial three-day or five-day cost that you might have on these Title 25s.
Reimburse the counties with that.
Yeah.
I wonder what the, it'd be interesting to hear what the other counties are dealing with, their costs are. Get an idea of a kind of a, a lift that would be.
When I was county attorney in Campbell County, which was 2003 to 2014, I did it for 12 years. It was great. There was about a $200,000 budget a year, and, and that was obviously, what, 10 years ago? So I'm imagining it's probably more now. They charged us about $3,000 a day per patient up at the hospital, and we actually got a pretty good rate, or that was considered a pretty good rate. And so, yeah, it was about $200,000 a year is what we paid.
People fighting to get into that business. That's pretty good. That's good coin. What do you think, Nathan? Want to do something?
So there's a lot of money.
It's not money, it's the dollars, it's just...
I can build a room.
Huh?
I can build a room.
You can build a room?
They can't get out of it.
What's happened is a lot of the...
What, we have grandma with the deadbolt on the outside?
A lot of the smaller communities, because they don't have the facilities within their community, have utilized Casper. And so Wyoming Behavioral Institute, which is, so they have the state hospital, they have Wyoming Behavioral Institute in Casper, and somehow the state and Wyoming Behavioral Institute kind of work together in some of their funding. I don't know how that works. But other, but the smaller counties at least have been able to tap into Wyoming Behavioral Institute, at least get their patients transported to Wyoming Behavioral Institute to care for them. But the costs aren't really, again, you need to find a way for the state to pay for those costs because it falls back to the county right now.
Well, and with a little bit of working with three of them so far, Title 25s, I've seen age group differences from minors to a prisoner. It's not just from, you know, somebody at home that's had some kind of a meltdown. A judge can order it, a doctor can order it. So, and I've found so far, I've had no experiences where it's not in the middle of the night and immediately half-hour response and try, you've got to get them there, and then you've got to get them on-boarded or admitted to the, to the facility down in Casper. So, I mean, there's, there's various different reasons for it, but it's, it's a long, it's a process, but I've had none that haven't been from about midnight to six or seven in the morning, or immediate turnaround and getting back. So, you know, on the side of, of personal side of it, there's high-risk insurance involved because you have to have high-risk insurance even, which is extremely expensive. And you, for example...
This is the facility.
Well, this is the person you're traveling with. The other thing is if it's a minor or a female, and you're a male, you want to have somebody, they require you to have somebody with you, just so no accusations can be made. And there's, there's a lot of detail involved in these Title 25s that you don't even really think about. It's just, it's kind of a real hassle for the county, for the people transporting them. It's, it's a hassle.
And that's where you'll see a lot of differences among the communities, because like what Commissioner Chairman, or Taylor's saying is, is that some communities will have their sheriff's department transport the Title 25s to a facility. Some, some do that, but it's a liability issue for the counties. Some people will have the hospital if they have a good ambulance service and they can do that, but a lot of times that requires extra security for the hospital because you got someone that needs to have supervision by law enforcement to get transported. And then sometimes you have private individuals or private companies who will contract for transportation of Title 25 patients. So all the different communities do different things. And so, again, it kind of leads to this, everybody's got different costs and different issues and different things. But there's different ways that people tap into resources to get individuals to where they need to go.
Yeah, and as soon as the Title 25 is triggered, then right now it's set that the county has, is responsible for it, whatever that cost is, so.
When, when did this come down? When did this begin?
It's been forever that I know of. I mean, as long as I've been the county attorney, they've always had Title 25 involuntary commitment proceeding.
And it's always been funded by the counties, individual counties, more and more.
The first, the first three days are clear that it's the county's. So you might have an individual that goes in on a Title 25, and they might take their medications, and they might get them stabilized in like two days. It's remarkable. You wouldn't think that could happen, but people do. They go in, take their medications, and they get released. Then you might have individuals that have to, you know, up to the 72 hours, that's clearly the county's responsibility to pay that. Then you might have to wait for a trial date. So you might have another four or five days potentially, that the county's gonna have to pay for another four or five days until we get into a trial. Now, the state's supposed to reimburse the county for those four or five days you're waiting for that trial time, but those first three days are clearly the county's responsibility to pay. And then once you can get them committed or ordered something, then it kind of shifts that cost to the state. That's in the statute too, you can find that, but...
Oh, I'm just trying to figure out what, I mean, what, this is gonna sound horrible, but why is it, why is it our responsibility? Why is it your responsibility to pick up the, the cost of somebody having, forgetting their medication or giving off their medication? I mean, why, why is that not their responsibility? If I have to show up with an ambulance and within 72 hours, just get you to take your meds, and I can bill the county potentially for $9,000, $3,000 bucks a day, or until the medication kicks in, why, why would that not be your responsibility? Why, why do we pick that up? I mean, unless we're just that wealthy and that we're just that kind of compassionate people, we'll send an ambulance and stuff. But why is there not at least a portion of that responsible to the party that they have to go to? Or is it, do you have to qualify for a certain level of income? Or what is it? What?
That's what we would like to know. It's, there's no...
I mean, I don't mean nasty, but that's my first thought, I mean...
You, typically, I know that hospitals always look to the patients, so if they do have insurance or they're on Medicaid or Medicare, then they try to collect that way first. That's usually what the hospitals are told to do. But, you know, if they don't want to collect or do, go through all the work of that, I mean, the statute clearly says that the county pays. So why, why some legislature did that way back when and create a law, it's because we, you guys have to pay, the county does, I don't know. But that's just the way it is.
Like Chip had brought up, that's, that sounds all like pretty legitimate. Those are some legitimate reasons. Also, you got to open up the case of the abuse side of it and saying, okay, the ones that do understand the statute, and like, like Jeannie had brought out, that there's repetition, right, yeah. That was my next curiosity question. It's like, if you've got a chronic going on here that is cycling through this constantly, it's like, is there something else? At some point, you've got to say, you know what, you can't keep doing this. You know, I mean, in theory, it's just, there's a point where you're gonna have to say, I can't take responsibility for that. I mean, obviously, there's issues beyond what we can, can financially support or can handle. And I, and I get that part. I mean, you know, there's, there are people that are, that desperately need this service, I'm sure. I mean, it's one of many that we offer as a state to try to help folks that are, that are less fortunate and dealing with major issues. And I, and I, I understand, and I get that. But I'm just curious as to just, you know, who are the, who are the folks that are involved in this? Is it abuse? Is it, is it child, is it minor issues and stuff like that, a dominant share? Or is it somebody that's just found out how they can, you know?
It could be all of the above, right?
So...
A lot of them are chronically mentally ill individuals who have struggled with it their entire life, and they just don't stay on their medications like they should. I mean, they struggle just generally trying to make ends meet and try to live every day. But then to, you know, have either, either not have the money for their medications, that seems to be an issue, like they just can't afford them, and so they just go off, and it's just a cycle.
Okay.
In that statute, 2510112, I mean, it goes so far as to call people within the county as like gatekeepers of these people, because they're going, I, I think nobody knows what to do with them at any level. So they're trying to go back to the point of destination and maybe designating the county commission or whoever as gatekeepers of this treatment. They're going back to the point of source is, is maybe their only idea for the answer of how to handle the cause and the effect of, of what it might cost. So, I don't know, it's weird to me.
Was it a pressure to try to, to put more responsibility or impetus on the communities to do something about it? I mean, if you don't want to have to pay for this, then start fixing it before it happens, or? I mean, I don't know if that would be the, you know, the thought process behind setting up something like that, because if it's just like, hey, guess what? If you have some of the deals with this particular issue, you're gonna pay for it. And it's just, you're just gonna have to find someplace to pay for it, or I'll start helping them not have to deal with those kind of issues. But as society is changing right now, and we're seeing so many things. And, and mental health is a, is a, is a big word right now. I mean, there's a lot of studies. They just did a mental health task force, trying to research and figure out what we can do on that. And I, I do wonder, Sherry, if that mental health task force even broached this subject, or if that was even brought up in that last interim task force. That would be interesting to find out.
That's a good question. And I was just looking at the statute while we were talking, and it just says, "The hospital shall attempt to recover the cost." So it's not a very strong mandate. I mean, it's likely they might go to the easiest form of payment, you know, as many people do. So, so I was looking at that. I also, while you were talking, sent an email to our fiscal staff to see if there might be another way that we could look at, you know, even if we didn't pay for all of it, if we started paying for some of it, if there, if there was a way that we could alleviate some of this through the Department of Health. But, so I've got some feelers in the water.
We'll just have to get back with the infill, what we can do, and see what options are available. Tax increase would help with that. Tag on the property taxes, there you go.
So I just looked it up, and it's the Wyoming Joint Judiciary Committee.
Judiciary.
And it's, it looks like 2021. It says it stalled again, is the headline. So, anyway, it's the Joint Judiciary Committee that's been working on this, and there's quite a few articles. If you just Google it too, you can kind of see what they, what they've tried to do. And Senator Nethercott is one of them that's leading that up to.
Okay. And judiciary, that would be, that'd be Rachel, the one on the House side. Chat with Rachel, find out what she knows about it.
And Mark.
Is Mark on the judiciary?
Yeah.
So back to tax reform. Where do you guys see, I know there's been a lot of proposals on property taxes, but where do you guys see that realistically going? Outside of the petition, you know, there's a lot of people that obviously are up in arms about the property tax. What do you guys realistically see it going in any type of reform at all?
Well, with, with leadership we have in place right now, they're pushing this. There's a 5% cap, but it's, that bill has a lot of, a lot of issues. I mean, the, the part that worries me is, last year, we had a lot of these bills that some of us were trying to promote, and all of them got killed. And then, over the interim, leadership did a, did a poll and found out maybe some of the stuff that we were trying to push last session is what their constituents as well want. And so now they're bringing bills that are titled similar to what we were doing, but they don't do the same thing. I mean, like the one, at least the one, there's one bill coming that has the 5% cap, but it only caps the part of the re, rise of your... But it only caps the part of the re rise of your property taxes. So it isn't, doesn't cap the whole whole thing.
And it only has to do with your dwelling specifically, does not touch your property.
Doesn't touch the property or any outbuildings right there on that same property, so it.
They continue to increase, but capture house, only to increase on the house if there's any increase.
So I mean, that one, that one probably isn't really a true true cap or a true tax reduction or reform. Another one they have coming is a good one. It's a, I think it's the lower of the five percent. Or the cost of living index. But that bill is tied, it doesn't go into effect if the ballot referendum made the fourth property class, which doesn't pass.
If the referendum fails, if people don't vote for it, that tax control goes away.
So basically, it's it's bribery. If you don't vote for this, you don't get any any reform. Well, at least in my opinion.
It's a trigger. It's what it literally is. It's it's written right into the bill itself. That if if the property tax initiative fails, but which and you guys know what that is, that's the four classes. What they're talking about is ag, you've got ag, you've got industrial, you've got what was now commercial residential that are tied together. Okay, what they wanted to do is, and what they passed last year was basically a fourth class. They're gonna strip out residential from the commercial, so you'll have four different tax classes. And the thought being there is that you can. As we're as we're learning now, what's what really happens is it, or what they were trying, the effort was. To try to find access to people with multiple homes, because you will get a break on your first home. But if you have a second home, then it goes into the commercial, which will be enabled everywhere. So it's what they're saying. And so, I mean, there's it's, I for all intents and purposes, there's there's some maneuvering going on around here to try to. To do some some work, but it's it's gonna be piecemeal, just like the the property tax exemption that was from eight million last year. That was potentially, we're looking at, the the governor is looking at putting twenty million in that to allow. People to be able to apply for those exemptions to get property tax relief. He was talking about, the first one was HB forty five, there's and that was the part of that that makes it a little bit, you know. How do you, is that gonna be enough? It will be some, according to that, they said it'll be potentially about a fifty million dollar reduction, somewhere in there. Forty nine million dollars in reduction to the to the overall revenue that was brought in. But there again, it doesn't do anything for your land. I mean, that and when we evaluate on fair market value. And people are paying more and more and more money for this, then then that just continues to climb, so that's gonna still be there, so.
So it's a temporary deduction for reduction?
Well.
And it's gonna increase back to where it was at some point.
Well, and even at, let's say, for example, and this is kind of an interesting note. If we cap taxes at five percent, your taxes will double every fourteen years. A five percent cap. Now, that sounds great and that would bring some relief and some help to people, because I've got folks that are talking to us and to me. Forty, fifty percent increase in taxes year over year. You know, and so and that's what they said this last year, this it's always lagged a year behind. So potentially, they said, if you think last year was tough, you said, wait till you see what's coming this year. And so that's what they're, we're trying to figure out. And, you know, there's there's some issues we're trying to figure out whether that's, if we're really doing comprehensive tax reform. Or if we're just kind of trying to make people feel a little bit better about what's going on, because here's here's. Quit talking, that's Sherry chat. What is, what are your thoughts, Senator Stein? So I can go into what I think is gonna happen on some of this stuff.
Oh, well, I was I was rereading that bill and. One of the things that regardless of what we do, I think is very important, especially to you guys is. And to our hardship counties especially, is that if there's a decrease to the county that we backfill that as the state. Because what we're seeing, and especially if the citizens' initiative goes through. To to reduce by fifty percent, that isn't necessarily a fifty percent reduction. I think in Goshen County, they're saying it would really be a fifteen percent reduction. But the but the schools and all of those entities we that were mandated to fund, that won't take the decrease. It'll be the county services and Representative Mayman has brought that up here. And so that's, I mean, especially with Title twenty five and not knowing how much you have to spend there, that's hard to budget for. And then to see a decrease in what is coming in, that it makes it hard for, especially all of our hardship counties. There's other counties that are flush, that it won't be as big a deal. So we're go, we're going to have to work through it in that manner as well. And I think the other gentlemen in the room have covered some of the bills pretty well. Obviously, they're they haven't all dropped yet. And we're looking forward to seeing what the County Commissioners Association, how you guys vote in that association. And weigh in on those bills when we get closer to session. But definitely want to keep the lines of communication open with you guys. On those issues too, about how, you know, what what we're proposing might affect the county and 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 the services. Quite frankly, of our constituents, because we still have to plow the roads, we still have to grade the roads, we still have to provide all those essential services.
When you say it's incumbent upon the people within the county to, you use the word bribery kind of, I guess. But is it the county commission to adopt those? Is that what it is falling upon? Is the county commission within each county to adopt that for the county or something?
Basically, the way the law is written, if that ballot initiative doesn't pass. Then that that cap won't come into place, the the legislature is.
If that fails, the cap goes away. That's that's no longer a.
Yeah, so it isn't, it isn't incumbent on the county commissioners, it's incumbent on the people as a whole. Either they vote for it or. Or you don't, if you don't like that new classification, then you aren't gonna get this tax. Possible cap on taxes.
Possible cap on your residential taxes, so. And so those.
We could amend that out too. I mean, those bills still have to go through the process. And we can amend those things. I didn't mean to interrupt you guys. I'm sorry for the lag or I I apologize for that. But but don't forget, we can, I mean, this is just introduced legislation. We can amend it.
Very much.
Good quick question. You're talking a second home. Were you talking a second home in Wyoming or a second home?
I would have to believe it would have anything to do with what's assessed or what you live have in Wyoming. You know, it's like, for example, at the ranch up there. I've got four homes, ranch buildings, outbuildings and stuff like that, the kids live in them. Well, the way this is set up is that those were just part of the residential. But now, if this goes through in that fourth level, then I'll pay a different. Anything other than the home I live in, because they consider that commercial, because on those, as we've gone over the years and. Bought a piece of property and had an old ranch, buildings on it, my kids live in it or whatever, that would swing underneath that. So it's gonna change.
Yeah, and I'm sure your county is, we've got some, I'd call them second homes up north here. People from back east.
Sure.
They come out here two months in the summer.
Yep. And that's the attempt. I think, don't you think, Sherry, wasn't that kind of the effort was to try to capture? You know, more money for those folks. But see, that's. Well, I guess, are we up? For the sakes of the.
Welcome to our world.
Well, I mean, but here's the thing. I guess, I have a heartburn with that. It's because we're now, we're we're deciding whether you can afford it or not. I'm coming after you because I perceive that you have more money. And you need to pay more.
But them are the them are the same people that's driving everybody's property taxes up.
Yep.
They're paying an overinflated price for a shack.
And it's a vicious cycle. And so and that's the problem. It exacerbates the problem. It's not like as if we're gonna recoup enough from you to be able to compensate for what you caused everyone else. And that's why I think it's so important that we actually pursue, which they they there's a real heartburn out there. Of changing how we assess the value of our properties. Because fair market value right now is a full-on tax on unrealized income. That's just a fact. I mean, it's just, if if somebody comes in next to Nathan and buys a property and it pays half again more than what his evaluation was the year previous. Then by statute, the the assessors have to raise his evaluation and we're just gonna send you a larger bill next year. Now, would you have paid that? No, I wouldn't have paid that for it. Why is he responsible to pay more? Did he get thirty percent more services? Did he get thirty percent better roads? Did he get anything more? What did he get for that? No, I just took more out of your pocket because somebody else had the wherewithal to be able to spend more money. Than what anybody else was willing to. And so and the way our system is for is is set up is that we capture that value and you pay more because you have more. And so that's the problem. And it's and if we don't look at that, I mean, I don't see any end in sight. I mean, it's just gonna continue to roll, because look at what you've got. I mean, I drove down, I didn't even know you guys had a road you could turn off instead of going clear to the corner and come right down through.
That's the old highway.
There's places to stay out there. I mean, that used to be a really quiet little spot through there. And so, but I mean, they like the remoteness, they like the beauty. They want to come to a place where people are crazy and I they're voting with their vehicles. And they're moving out here and when you leave California. And you just sold your house for four and a half million dollars and you drive into Newcastle, Wyoming and buy a beautiful home here for what? Three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars? You're like, you're stealing it. Well, the guy next to it's like, are you serious? You just paid that for that? Do you know what that's gonna do to all of us? And even then, you see the price of inflation and the cost of everything going up. And concrete and infrastructure and everything, and it's like, that ain't even enough. Just like Title twenty five, we're gonna have to figure out someplace to come up with some money. Or try to look at that so that we can help compensate the counties for for unfunded mandates. Let's say, hey, you gotta do this and you gotta find the money. So it's kind of a, we hate to see our taxes go up, but boy, I hate to not be able to pay our bills.
I think you hit it on the head there, Chip, with the with the taxes. We all understand that taxes are necessary for the services provided.
Keep business, keep communities moving.
To talk about the basics of of taxes, if I if I call Holly up and say, hey. Can we move ten dollars from this savings account into this account? She could care a lot. But if you take ten dollars out of that and it's no longer there, she might want to know what that was used for. And and that's where I'm noticing the issues on either tax increases or whatever. If there's a five percent increase in taxes or is there a five percent cap or whatever in the in the services provided? Or where is this going? Is this, just define the five percent. Is it is it strictly inflation? Is it more service? And if it is, where does it go? I mean, that's a that's a pretty good question.
Yeah.
If you're gonna if you're gonna move it from here to here and we're gonna see the benefits from it, is one thing. But maybe if the the services stay the same and you're just gonna get charged more, it could be an issue.
Yeah. Again, and that and we say that in the legislature, that's not a question. That's a, you finished that, but don't you agree? You know, and so, yeah, no, I mean, and that's the problem we face right now. And that's what we need to be here talking to you guys, because just like this information of the Title twenty five. In my tenure, I've never heard that come up. My county has never talked about the cost of Title twenty five. That's a first. So. It's the same conversation I have with somebody that's down there in in Casper and they say, you know, Chip, we need more money for water. I've got some incredibly good water projects that we need to develop in Wyoming. Water is the most critical thing that we resource, that we need to be figuring out how to save it. We need to figure out how to how to to manage it better, store it, all these different things. He said, it would be great if you'd put fifty million dollars in that water account so that we could start building some dams, reservoirs, fixing infrastructure in this community. I'm like, that's an awesome idea, because you can run out of oil, but if you run out of water, you're gonna be in way more trouble than if you run out of oil.
Protect our water too.
And protect your water. And then I asked him, I said, but how do you feel about your property taxes? And he's like, oh, my God. He said, it's unreal. He said, you've got to fix this. He said, they're gonna break us all. And it's like, but how am I gonna give you fifty million? Where's it gonna come from? We've got to find a, we've got to find a place somewhere where everybody can say, how much are you willing to give? Because I I have to take it from someone else.
You have a job for you, legislature. You have to find that happy medium on what you're gonna charge us and what you're gonna provide us. And right now, what you're charging, we're providing way more than what we're charging. You look what it's what it's costing, what people pay in taxes for the cost of services they receive. It's a it's an astronomical difference. It's not even close.
Well, and the thing is, we're looking at the value of what we're doing in our severance. And our our oil, our energy sector are supporting this. You cannot, like, the average is what, thirty one hundred or four thousand, Sherry? Something like an average family of four produces in tax income in the state of Wyoming. But if they have two children in our school system, that's a value of thirty four thousand dollars. And they're getting the equivalent of thirty two thousand dollars in value back from that. So it's our industries are supporting the balance. And and it's not a bad thing, as far as that's concerned, because I've actually read an article where we're moochers, we're just mooching. Well, stop and think about that. We're providing a service and we're selling a product. We're good at it. Others are demanding that product and we get more for it than what? You know, I mean, it's it's like, it's like saying, because he got fourteen hundred dollars apiece for his steer calves this fall or two years ago or in fourteen. That he's mooching off of somebody that needed the meat. It's like, no, the market drives that. He's just a good enough manager to be able to, how much of that money is he gonna spend on expenses? How much does he get to keep? But the problem is, if Mr. Todd builds a facility that is so expensive and so exorbitant that he can no longer maintain it. The market will take him out and somebody else will own his ranch. In government, all I need to do is if I've built something that everybody's really used to and likes the services of. I will just extract more money from you. I don't have to hope that the market will support it. I just take more money. So what we do now is we extract minerals and we put it in trust funds or permanent savings accounts. We move coal out of the ground, sell it to someone, they pay us and we get the benefit of that and we put some away. You know, so I I think what it boils down to, to me, is we don't have a money problem in Wyoming. We've got, we've got a a money management problem, spending issue. And that's where the conversation gets really, really tight. When I first got in down there, and Sherry knows, we cut four hundred and fifty eight million dollars for the budget. But the problem people have with like this this proposition and taxes and and maybe wants to pay more in taxes. But the way our structure is set up, education in that particular, because I just had this discussion with with some folks last night. Education doesn't take a haircut, because the way our statutes are written and our constitution is written.
And courts have defined it.
You don't get a cut there. If if this goes through, Title twenty five and finding money for Title twenty five is gonna be more difficult, because it's not an even haircut. The way it's written. And we spend a lot of money on education. Can we be more efficient in that? What are those things we have to do? And so to me, guys and and gals, the larger conversation needs to be here, what structural things? Do we need to address in Wyoming that we don't starve out our municipalities and our and our communities? Mayor Mills made an awesome statement at a town hall we just had up here in Upton. He said, we've got to look at our communities as an investment, not an expense. And that's true. That is absolutely true, because normally it's always the communities are an expense. And when you, when people are tired of paying exorbitant or increasing rapidly increasing taxes, we need to structurally look at how we factor our taxes. What are we putting our money to that is mandated? That you guys will dry up before the school ever dries up, unless we get into such a situation. As the label legislative stabilization reserve account, the LISRA, falls below half a billion dollars. At that point, if it falls to half a billion or below, all back funding, all backfilling to education stops. And we were close to that before. And we were talking about a potential seven percent decrease in funding to education. And. People's hair lit on fire. We all got stacks of cards from little kids saying, please don't fire my teacher. I love my teacher. I mean, it was it was tragic. I mean, I, we got them and that was the push that come on, you're gonna kill education. It's like, you guys then, I come to these meetings and we listen to you guys say. We don't have enough pie here to go around and we are having things leveraged on us that we're being required to pay for. That nobody's saying anything about how we're gonna pay for it. So this conversation is gonna continue, in my mind, until we make some very serious decisions on how we structure our spending. And what we do, whether we, whether you allow. Whether we, whether you allow school choice, whether you allow competition in education, whether you make districts compete for those dollars. Just like you have to, just like we do in agriculture. We have to compete and do the best job and be the most efficient that we possibly can. But I'll be I'll be honest with you. I mean, just trying to say, we just need more money and then we leave here and I run into a taxpayer that says, I need you to take less of my money because I can't afford to keep up with you guys. That's that's a very difficult place. So, there's some, there's some structural things that need to happen in order to really bring about some actual effective change in how we tax and how we spend.
Am I allowed to say anything?
Uh, so, um, I'm one of those examples where my neighbor just sold their house to two women from California. They were asking five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for his house, which two years, two years ago was probably a quarter million dollar, would have been evaluated a quarter million dollars. And as it was said, people are getting this fair market value windfall in all over the country, our 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 state. This is unrealized because it's not fair, it's not assessed value. It's fair market value. And they're getting this money that they never expected and and like all good addicts, they gotta keep it. And as it was said, it's not going for roads. It's not going for anything. This is just over the top extra because people are coming here and spending exorbitant amounts of money on real estate. And I, as a resident of Wyoming and other people, a property owner, is getting the burden of this. And it's not going to anything. But my pit, my thing is, in this state, counties have been so outspending, they've been grants, federal grants, all this stuff they've been funding their county governments with and all these grants are drying up. And now, well, here's an answer. We'll just take all this fair market value taxes that we're overburdening our residents with and pay off our um our financial, in other words, their lack of being fiscally responsible is now on the burden of the taxpayer. And that's what it is. Thank you.
I think Nathan's first, Chip.
Twenty or twenty-five years ago, I remember there was folks moving here from South Dakota because property taxes were a major issue. And I don't know today. I don't hear about it, but maybe it's still an issue, but maybe it's not. I mean, has anybody considered looking into what other states nearest have done to try to to broach this problem?
Do you have some?
I I mean, Ed's right. I I I looked at a statistic that every individual that moves in the state of Wyoming, it's a net tax loss for the state because we are such a tax friend of the state. And and we complain about paying sales tax in Wyoming. Yet we're more than happy to spend a hundred dollars to drive to Rapid City and pay sales tax on our foods that we buy at Sam's Club. So,
Or strip up into Montana.
Yeah, or to Billings. So, I think there's a lot of issues at play here and.
There was a guy, gentleman the other day that called and I'm still waiting for the information from him. So, he said, Chip, he said, what can we do? What kind of much sales tax will we have to charge if we could do away with property tax? And I thought, I mean, the first thought, I'm like, what? You know, and he's like, no, I'm not kidding you. He said, we don't own our property. He said, I'd be curious to know what that kind of numbers would look like. What would, and he said, because it's fair. He said, it's a user fee. He said, if you're not paying property tax because you rent and don't own a home, he said, but you buy goods and services. He said, so now all of a sudden, you're a player in the tax scheme. And I was I was at a uh training, not a training, but a legislative deal down there with the Lions Defending Freedom and there was, I believe he was a legislator from Louisiana, I think. I don't know. I don't know what state it was. They said, we do that. He said, we take eleven percent sales tax. But, he said, if you don't wanna buy it, you don't buy it. And he said, but everybody pays. And he said, it is, it just transformed our communities. He said, because that money stays locally, goes in for infrastructure and things like that. He said, and then that portion of it goes to the state to run state operations. He said, we have virtually no property taxes, if not at all. He said, we compensated it with a high, high level of sales tax. And so, that's another issue we hear in there, even like, like you said, Nathan. I I well, um, Crawford, Dr. Crawford, he went and bought some land down over in and down up, I think, New Underwood or something like that. He said, the only way I can make that work is because I've got Ellsworth Air Force Base has got an acre of of a missile site deal out there on it with a radar station. He said, that's how we make that work. He said, if we didn't have that on there to pay our property taxes, he said, it's, ag taxes are unbelievable. He said, he said, I don't know how these guys sustain it. But there's gotta be something else in there that helps them because people are still moving to South Dakota. People are growing up. You look at Rapid City, you look at the expansion and the development, what's growing over there? Spearfish? My gosh, there are just people moving in there. I don't know what is doing to ag. But see, that's another thing. In our ag um evaluation, and and this is a good question for all you guys because you see it too. I've had a lot of constituents ask, why in the world are we allowing people that are not really quote unquote in agriculture in Wyoming to come in here and get an ag evaluation and pay agricultural taxes on seventy acres of ground?
They're saying good money.
And they can do it cheap in Wyoming because we don't, all we ask is you do is that you get five hundred dollars. If you make five hundred dollars, you can get ag evaluation depending on the acres above. I think, isn't Sherry above thirty-five acres or something?
Your mic's not on.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
I think there's an acreage amount, but I thought it was a thousand dollars was the ag exemption. I might have to look that up.
It's five hundred if you if if you own, if you lease it, it's a thousand, I believe.
I think it just went up. I'm not very long.
And so, my question in that is, how do we, without, how would I propose that? Well, I'll stop and think. Wait, Chip. You could propose that and they would get rid of you and we could be out of the whole nonsense, but.
That is true.
If if that's that, somebody's gonna touch that sacred cow. But how do we do that? I mean, because I've got people in my country up there that really resent the fact that they're working hard out there in actual ag, fighting and working and up cold and breaking ice. And then they see somebody with a multimillion dollar house up on the hill and their land and their evaluation, other than that one acre around their house, is ag. He said, well, they they don't let a cow on it except for maybe a month, just enough to qualify, and then that's a hunting preserve. But they're getting a real break in their agricultural evaluation. How, is there, is there, I'm asking, is there a way? Is that something that should even be broached? Because we see ranches in my country that are being subdivided. Old foundational historic ranches are being sold because the kids were not interested in carrying that on. They saw a huge chunk of money and they sold it and split it and subdividers out of Florida, California, Illinois and around are chunking them up in thirty-five to a hundred acre blocks and selling and making a lot of money on them. But these people are still ag. So, is there a fair and right way to handle that? And how would a person do that? And have you guys seen that here? Is there any of that same sentiment down here in this country? Is it fair? Just asking.
And which side you talk to, probably. The one side would say it is fair, the other side would say it isn't fair, but it.
Most issues are like that.
It's around here, you know?
So, I don't know.
I I think they changed some of the agrars in South Dakota in the last few years. Maybe you should look at those for some of those reasons. And it unfortunately hurt some people who had small properties, who'd been ag for a long time and have been living here for a long time. But I think they changed their their tax laws because of that.
See, and there was a, there was a lady that called me. She said, I've got two hundred acres. She said, and we lease, it's all, it's up, we build a house in the middle of some hay fields. And she says, and we lease the pasture, the hay out for somebody to put up and on shares. She said, it's been drought for three years. She said, we have sold nothing off of it. She said, so what's gonna happen? She said, it's gonna push us off of here if they kick us out of ag because we don't even qualify for the five hundred dollars. She said, there's nothing there. So, those are people that are genuinely trying to do it from ag, but but how, those are the folks that are gonna really get hurt by that. You know, or do you put a determination within five years you have to generate so much?
I I had another thing earlier. I I actually was reading an article yesterday, I think it was in Casper Star, about the the tax laws, you know, what you guys are working on. And a couple of things came out of it to me. One, they were discussing, I think it was Sweetwater County, having forty million dollars in reserves, which are about choked. Just look out for these little hardship counties because it's not that we don't wanna help our people. Uh, we pay taxes too and we don't like it either. But I'm really concerned, deeply concerned about what it's gonna do for us, you know, when we, when we have less money. I'm not sure what we're gonna do. I mean, we're we're so tight all the time now. I'm really concerned about that. There should be something that helps these small counties like us, Goshen, some of these counties that we don't have the money to spare. If we did, we're more than happy to give it back in in tax refunds. I'm just not sure we could deal with that. And the other part of the article was concerning, will this eventually there, one of the concerns was, this will push us into having a state income tax, flipping over and saying, okay, we're not paying, we're not gonna pay, real estate taxes is high, but okay, now we have a state income tax. Are, is that a concern of yours? Do you see that?
I I guess, I guess, I think that's just a way, at least in my opinion, is that's a way for them to to really squash this whole deal of the people's initiative. I mean, I might, I may be wrong, but that's that's the way I would see it. The other, the other other issue I I really think we as legislators and you guys as commissioners need to be looking at is, what is the role of government? And unfortunately, I think right now, we have government doing a lot of roles that is really not the place of government. And and when we do that, then we have funding going to a lot of places the government shouldn't be sending, putting money into. And so, I mean, I think that's something that all of us need to be looking at across the state. Okay, what is actually the role of government? Is it the role of government to make sure that I buckle my seatbelt every time I get in the car? Or I only drive certain speed? Is it to take care of my neighbor's kid if they need childcare? I mean, or is it to build our roads, keep our bridges up, make sure we have water and sewer? I mean, what is the role of government? And and that's where we've gotta look at hard. Clear down from the county all the way up to the state. Are we, are we actually, is the government actually doing the legitimate roles of government? Or have we added a whole bunch of other things in that we shouldn't even have our fingers in?
Just like what we just discussed, that's absolutely God's honest truth. You know, because people want services, they want these things. It's like the mental health issue and that's my question. Why are we paying for that? Why are you guys being told that that's something that you're just gonna have to pay for? Whether you want to or not. Something that happens, it's just your responsibility and you know, it's, those are the hard questions that we need to ask as citizens of any place in this whole country is, you know, what what things should be our responsibility and we should be picking up the tab for what things, you know, it's just like roads. Yeah, roads, infrastructure. There's infrastructure stuff with you guys, this community here in Newcastle and and in in Upton and we're looking at trying to figure out ways of trying to help create some, that to me is the role of government. Is make sure the roads are so I can get my commodities to town. If you wanna help that and secure our borders. Make it safe for me to be able to do business in this nation. And and let business protect us and our ability to do those things and to operate and then we can, we can thrive and make money. But as, you know, as they said, it's just in the last, what, three years? What you bought three years ago, it requires six thousand dollars more to buy the same things now. Just on rate of inflation. So, where'd that money come from? And it's like what you guys are dealing with here. Well, we need some more money. We 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 don't have the money. Well, we're just feeling the effects of of leadership that is not there is what we're doing right now.
Yeah, we, the question has come up is, you know, what are we, we're required to by state statute provided what we're not. At one point down, we're gonna have to start looking at the things that we're providing that's not required and we may have to start cutting some of them things and that's, and we look at, those are things we don't wanna cut because those are our future.
Well, I think, you know, you get it down to a brass tacks thing, you, what about the churches? What about people being involved? A lot of times they've taken them out of this. A lot of people took up a lot of mental health, a lot of those things and dealing with people and on those levels and and social issues and stuff. The government will take care of it. A lot of people have just kinda throwed up their hands because of regulation and interference and dominated by government and they're just saying, well, the government's, they're gonna take it out of my check anyway. You know, so why, why, why am I worried? I gave it the office. So, then it just exacerbates the problem. Well, then we need even more help. And so, yeah, no, it's it's a very real issue and people are gonna have to start taking and making some some very difficult decisions, but you know, it's, it's just interesting to watch, you know, as as and Wyoming is so blessed. I mean, I I just realized I was meeting at Precorp here just a few minutes ago before I came down here. Their their uh boards meeting. And it's amazing is what's happening. And if you're gonna see it here, I'm sure that the PRB, Powder River Basin over here, that, and conversations I had with the Wyoming Patrol Association is the most exciting oil play in the world right now. It's happening right here. And enhanced oil recovery, I was in a meeting down there talking and listening to what they're saying that they're calling CO2, something that is gonna destroy all of our lives, kill us, you know, gonna break ways the temperature of this place one degree. I would've took one degree when it was thirty-seven below here. I don't know whether it would've mattered to me, but I would've took one degree with a little warming. My cows would've loved a little global warming. But I'm in that meeting and they're talking about the fact that now CO2, because of enhanced oil recovery, they can't, they can't even get enough. They can't even make enough CO2. And we're talking about sequestering it. We're talking about pumping it into the dirt and taking it out of the atmosphere when our atmosphere is sixty percent below ideal for growing conditions right now for CO2. And you look over here, the highest producing oil well drilled in history of the state was drilled last year, right over here in the PRB. They said, there's twelve separate oil plays right now that they they know where they're at. They don't even know the 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 potential of what's there horizontally, let alone vertically. They said, they're still developing technology. Two of the plays, they don't even know how they're gonna get into them, but they know they're there and there's people working. And there's resources out there that are just unfathomable. And that's the big issue. We discussed that this morning. A change in leadership. And we just saw an indication, I think, of what people want yesterday in Iowa. You like him or hate him, whatever. That's the kind of leadership that we need to get us back, people work in America First, energy costs. Everything you guys are dealing with right now is is directly tied to us buying energy from nations that would love to see us in our demise. That's wrong. And if we don't correct that on a national level, this is gonna get worse.
So, I guess one other question I would have. Title twenty-five is one of your unfunded mandates for countywide. Do you have any others that you know of?
Yeah. Any things that you guys got that you're being laid at your door that you can't?
Our guys just go into the school districts. The biggest percentage of everybody's taxes. You know, everybody jumps at us about what they're paying in property taxes. It's like, we'll back off. You know, we get, the county itself gets such a small portion of it. You know? Educating the public is a big thing. You know, where your taxes are going. But other unfunded mandates that we've got, I don't, not off the top of our head right now.
Just Title twenty-five.
I think, I think as a newbie here, one of the things that was shocking to me is the expenses
that go towards our county jail and law enforcement. You know, we pay for everything for the prisoners and by that, that, depending on how many people are in jail, you know, we're feeding them, getting them medical care, paying for their lawyers. That that for a hardship county is is another expense that's that can be very draining.
What is, just out of curiosity? What is, just out of curiosity, what are some costs? Do you have any idea what it costs to deal with what, what Commissioner Hebert just said?
Well, that account was wiped out within a month.
She just taught me, well, what other one is? Court, court-appointed attorneys. We have a family, say, there's a father, a mother, and a child. We have to appoint an attorney to all three.
And nine months out of ten, we don't get those funds back ever.
I mean, just for example, do you have numbers on, on those type of expenses that your counties are?
Uh, court, court, court-appointed attorneys, I think there was, was there a hundred? Let me see.
We just did a major budget adjustment to Tina to give her more money for that.
And I want to say, one of the ways to try to shift that is so that it's not coming from the county. So right now, you have public defenders who are criminal individuals, you got guardian alibis who help kids that are in the court system. You could create a set of attorneys that were paid by the state, in particular for attorneys for parents and these juvenile cases. And so, they've created pockets of attorneys that come from state source funding rather than the county. But this is another example where, um, parents are involved in juvenile neglect or abuse actions. They are entitled to court of private counsel, they can't afford it, and that's shifted to the county to pay that. But you could create attorneys for parents through the state like they do the other, the other types of attorneys from the state or from the.
So are you guys talking about the guardian ad litem program? And I think every county participates in that except Goshen County. All the rest of the counties participate in that?
So there is this, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's a, there's a state-funded guardian alitem program, and they hire attorneys around the state to provide guardian alitem services, and that's paid by the state. And so, every county has guardian alibis for each county that are paid through the state.
Correct. Except for Goshen County, they don't, they, they don't participate in the program. Yeah. So I wanted to, if I could, take us back to the, because I'm hopeful our car is going to get fixed here in a minute, and so I may not be able to stay a lot longer, but I kind of wanted to zoom us back out to more of the big picture about we're coming into a budget session, and we're flush with money. And so, what, the way I'm approaching handling it is, I'm not sure which tax measure will pass. I know that our citizens need tax relief, and I know that our counties need to be, we need to make sure that they're able to function and provide the essential services that are what government is for and which are, I mean, we need to protect and we need to empower our citizens. So protect, you know, defense and, but empower, we need to be able to get our goods to market. We need to take care of those things that we've agreed to, to do together as a community. So as I look at it, we need to prioritize our spending, and that's going to be hard to do when we're coming in flush. It always is because people come in with all their pet projects, and they, they tend to spend way more than we should. And so, and the other part we need to really evaluate is how much of the money should be going into savings or going back to our citizens or at least our local governments in a way that will substantially help them. The other thing I think we really need to consider as we go forward, because we know this property tax issue is not going to be solved in a budget session, it's just too short. But if we can put together stopgap measures that'll start taking us in the right direction and give our citizens some relief, that is what I would like to see without critically harming our hardship counties. And, and that will be something, we have to do it in a way that works. And so, when we look at this entire piece, we might just be getting a little done here and a little done there until we get something that actually works. Because if we, because we don't know, we, there are things we don't know. Will the initiative pass the fifty percent decrease? Will the fourth property tax pass? Those are two things. We don't know what is going to happen with that, and we will honor the citizens' wishes as to how they vote or how, if they get their, the citizens' initiative through. And so, those are all things, that's the hardest part about the legislature is you have so many moving parts that you have to deal with. And then you have our constitution that, that is there to protect us, that requires uniformity of assessment and requires the Board of Equalization to equalize the valuation on all property. And so, so all of those things are moving parts. And I guess, for me, I'm just trying to put together a, a goal-making procedure that I will try to look to, to follow and then hope for all the input we can get from you guys as we go through this session and you're hearing about what's going on and, and how we're, how things are moving through the session. And we, we really rely on your input and your boots-on-the-ground experience as our commissioners to help us make those good decisions. So I, I just don't want to see us harm our citizens or our local governments as far as the vital services we have to provide. And if school, when schools aren't taking their fair share of a cut, we have to really be careful with that.
I guess, Stan, close your, close your ears, okay? So maybe taking into consideration the hardship counties, you know, if you're flush with money, if there were funds available for counties like us to put in for grant, for, for infrastructure or for building and maintenance repair, things that come up, perhaps even expenses we don't know about right now, that are really tax us if there was an availability sometimes to get, get some kind of grant money for that. And make it to where we don't, we don't have to compete with those counties that have forty million dollars set aside, but they want the grant money because it saves them, they can keep their forty million over here. We don't have that to fall back on. But when that money is out there, we have to compete with those counties to get that money. Does that make sense?
It does, but actually, the MRG program through the state, the state land and investment board, which would be your top five elected officials, there are funds available through that for emergencies or deficiencies, things that are just really hard on smaller communities. And it is actually designed, if you read through their rules, they have to consider hardship counties or smaller communities that can't, are, have less ability to pay for things like that in those programs. And so, that is, that is something that you should look into if you have, have things coming up. There's also an extra, I think it's fifty-eight million dollars in ARPA funding that is unutilized. I'm not sure how that will be distributed, but that is some extra funding. That was one of the reasons I supported the ARPA bill was just so that the local communities could get more money for infrastructure. And we have deployed quite a bit of infrastructure money through those programs. But the MRG programs are a good way for our smaller communities to get some funding that they might need and require.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'm over, I'm over.
Two things to keep in your mind, back to mind, too, is PILT. That's, that's always one that we're always coming up short on what, because our state is so much federally and state-owned, you know, all the counties suffer from PILT. And then another one is when FNRPA, FNRPA funding comes up, please support that because we were just on the Zoom with Drew this morning, the, through the WCCA and through everything they're providing with, you know, the Rock Springs, you know, what's going on down there, you know? And that's, a lot of that is funded through FNRPA with the lawyers and stuff. That's something, please keep in mind that the FNRPA funding is very important to this, to the state, all of the state.
Yes, and we've recommended that be funded, fully funded, and if asked that appropriations committee consider putting extra in for NURPA. And so, that's an action that the, the chairman of the egg committee took on your behalf. That's been done.
Thank you. One thing I have to give you is when I was at that precorp meeting, Philip Hawbeck wrote a check to the Weston County Fire Department for twenty-five hundred dollars to give to you guys. Who gets that?
I can give it to Dan.
That's wonderful. Awesome.
She goes, just sitting there, he starts checking my shirt. I'm sticking to him.
I'm going to have to leave the meeting. I, I really appreciate all your time, and thank you for letting me zoom in. I, I really appreciate it. And I'm at your service if you need something.
Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Good luck traveling home. Hope everything goes well.
I hope we can. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming in. We appreciate it. Well, we appreciate your input. And, and I will tell you this, whether or not you voted for him, he's a good hand. He, I really, he's, he's, he has been a tremendous asset to us down there. And I will tell you this, he, if there's anybody on that floor that'll fight for your rights and your privileges as a citizen of this country and the state, this guy right here would die for that. And I don't even know why I'm telling you that, but as far as your, your elected official from this district, right there is a tremendous asset that's, that's doing you guys a good job. He really is. He's not the most, he's not going to be the first guy in front of the camera or anything like that down there trying to say how big an eye he is for it. Alan Slakel is a tremendous asset to, to all of us down there, and especially to you guys up here. And so, until he starts to really screw everything up, I hang on.
Maybe I could go for it.
Yeah, well, I can go for it. See if we, see if we can get that changed on these.
Yeah, that's, you know, and that's it. I know that's, it would be awesome, you know, to be able, let's say for your senate district, to be able, each county has a senator, and that's the way it should be. Because that's no different than what we have on our national scene. We have two senators. So does California. How is that fair? Is that one man, one vote? No, it's not. But boy, I tell you what, thank God, we have the same number of senators to be able to control and help protect the rural areas. And that same thing would help us as we see more senators and growth in our urban areas. Our rural areas shrink and less and less representation. We're, yeah, we're losing it in Wyndham. Yeah, our, our main drivers are coming out of the cities now. And we've got to figure out what we can do about that. And hopefully, if we have a continued move towards more conservative legislators that can see that and support that and fight that fight, be willing to fight it, and that can happen. Leave your house, that's fine. Expand, whatever you want to do that. Do it just like the national. As your numbers, well, we can't put them all in that building. The building's beautiful. We don't want to wreck the building. Well, I get that, I understand. But there's got to be some, some protection, and that, to me, looks like the best mythological way of doing it. It just doesn't look municipalities run to the full length of the rural areas. And I have to say, Mr. Todd, every time I look at you, I just see a poster of William F. Cody. I'll tell you what, if you put a buckskin jacket on and stuff like that, maybe, I mean, I'm just scared.
Bleach is hair white.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be, it would be a hoot to have him. You're, you're sporking up pretty good. I wish, yeah, that, this whole thing, that's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for taking the time. Thanks for your time. Congratulations.
Now I see it.
Appreciate it.
See you later.
Thanks for your time.
You just now seen it?
No, now I see it.
Oh, my God, I walked in, I'm like this. I was like, what is that? What is that? He's down here in Weston County.
Let's get a steak.
Mr. Cody.
My girls talk, man.
Do they?
Yeah.
Well, that fits you.
My wife, my wife doesn't like it.
Really?
The girls are out voter.
As long as you keep peace in the household, whatever you want to do. But I tell you what, you look like William F. Cody.
One thirty.
But you got to say it.
Airport's going to be here at one fifteen.
We have to be here by one.
Just better hurry.
We're going to recess till one o'clock.
It's better than I thought it was going to be when I was thinking about the split.
Yeah. Well, when I talked to Alicia a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at maybe seven tops, but we're up to nine, potentially ten. We had a new kid move in that might be wrestling as well and joining the team now, you know, so a little bit behind the, behind the start. So that's going to put us in a, in a problem when it comes to duels. You know, we're not going to win a lot of duels because we don't have anybody over a hundred and sixty pounds. And so, you know, we're going to give up forty points.
Right.
In every duel we meet. So obviously, it's going to be tough to make that up. We do have some good returners.
Well, you get a couple of baddies off the couch and have them put the pop tarts down and.
Right?
You can give people a run for the money.
Yeah.
Probably going to get in trouble for that one, too, but.
Yeah, you might.
Come on, Evvies, get out there and, and go wrestle.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. What we left off was, the next thing up was the Weston County Museum District Board update. Where do we get the update from?
The board.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready for you.
Hi. Hi. Thank you for allowing us to come out and share how we're doing and, and what we've been up to. Appreciate it. So I'm Cindy Dicer, I'm the Director of the Weston County Museum District. This is Harriet Berkeley, she's our secretary. And this is Mike Mills, he is our Chair of the Board. We have, the district operates two museums, we have two full-time employees, we have one part-time employee. The part-time employee works in Upton, and Maggie and I take turns driving back and forth to Upton on those days that our part-time person doesn't work there. Both museums are open five days a week, eight to four. This last Friday, we were closed because of the weather. I have a letter here that we send out to our donors, and it basically tells what we've been up to, our happenings are on the front.
Thank you.
The happenings are the first quarter of the year. I like to send them out in quarters because too many things can happen between now and the end of the year. So starting with the Red Onion, we sold our house, and it was in need of repair and whatnot, and we felt it wasn't on the main traffic. So we sold it, and we had a lease-to-purchase option out at Old Town, and it's a still building, and it sits on point two, sixty-two acres. So we used that money from the house to purchase this building. The location has proved to be a benefit. We have a lot more foot traffic. We're able to host events for a crowd rather than just four or five people. And the end of June, we hosted Living History Days. It was a pre eighteen forties, and TPs were set up, and the Chief of Police, she was able to have a group come in, and they had like a rendezvous type of setting. And so, people were able to experience what that was like. Also, the Red Onion, they have pioneering on the patio events, and that's kind of like, oh, educating the public on the past, the lost skills, maybe like soap making or wool spinning or something like that. The Anna Miller has had many events, and I'll just list a few for the sake of time. We've had many oral histories, and though we, I listed quite a few of those on your letter there. Had some great oral histories, and I'll continue to do that. I think that's a really important thing for our community. Once those people leave us, we no longer have that history, that's gone. So we will continue with that. In Newcastle, we had the Japanese war Berlin, we had Dave Markham come up from Cheyenne. We talked about that. And I don't know if you remember, back in the 40s, it was before your time, back in the 40s, they had this balloon land out near the Adkin and Paula Ranch. And so, it was very interesting, very, very interesting. We had Foraging for Wild Foods. That was in October, and Caleb Carter came up and talked about that. And so, we also had two Living History Day events here this year. We had one in May, and that was the civilian and military life in the 1860s. And then we also had the Wind River Dancers in September. This next year, we have the election coming up in May, so I'll just have the one in September. In addition to events, of course, we have our maintenance items. Sidewalks were replaced at the front and the back entrances of the museum here in Newcastle. And then also, handrails were added in, and I've had a lot of compliments on the handrails, because the older people, when you watch them walk up and down the stairs, it's a big deal, and those handrails are appreciated. So, let's see, and we also had Dwight Soder create some signs for the Jenny Stockade, the Green Mountain Schoolhouse, the Melvack Miller Cabin. And they just add a nice little summary and a nice addition to exhibits. And to finish up with a little bookkeeping, we received 70% of what was requested. Of that amount, 34% was on payroll expenses. 29% has been used on the building and grounds, which, a lot of that was used for the Red Onion in Upton, for a new furnace and security and things like that. So again, we wanna thank you, and if you have any questions for us or anything, we're just here to share an update.
Questions from the board?
No.
We appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. I might wanna go see if I can learn how to bankroll. We may need that skill. This is very nice, thank you. Just very nice.
Oh, yeah, they're ready.
Hello, y'all.
Hello.
Bob.
Tuff.
Tried to shut the lights off to your truck. Your taillights went.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
It's probably in the brakesway.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, though.
Pull out.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're here for, for two reasons. There's two pieces of paper require your signature, please, to support a, wants to support a seal coat and marking project we've got coming up. That's a task order, and then the other thing is the crack seal that will be getting underway. There's a little money attached to it, $7,000 roughly, you'll see for the first one, $3,000 roughly for the second one. That's the, that's your, that's your match.
A number like this is presented to the Commissioners over here going to see if they have...
Well, we mentioned it, we mentioned it last time when we were here. The sheet there that has the task order, or it's called Exhibit A Task Order, that has some numbers in the back of it, that is just for the engineering fees. They had to break that down on the seal coat part. That is their, that's 40-some thousand dollars. That's just their, their fee they have to, they have to have the approval to, for this task order. This amends their general, their agreement with the county and the city. And so by amendment, they have to put their total amount. That's, ours is a small percentage of that, which is included in the, the $7,200 for our share of the seal coats. That, I just didn't want anybody throwing those numbers off when they see that 40...
What's the total amount of that project got?
For which the seal?
The seal, yeah.
Hundred and forty, 144,000.
Yeah, 144,000 of which?
Our...
Your share is the 7,000.
7,200.
Is that, that 7,000, our share of that county and city?
7, 7,200 actually is for the county and 7,200 for the city.
So it's 14,000.
14,000, four, three, twenty...
Matching funds is 14,000. And the seal coat and the crack seal is, it's pretty self-explanatory about what that is, but could you just explain to the board a little bit?
Uh, yeah.
Runway only or...
Yeah, the crack seal will be for the entire paved surface of the airport. They'll just go through and just fill in all the cracks, and then the seal coat will be for, will come afterwards, and it will be for the runway turnarounds and then the paved portions of the taxiways. The ramp itself won't, you have a seal coat. And it also includes painting, repaint the stripes.
Tuff, did you say both of these will be in this fiscal year? Or was the one not?
The projects are scheduled for this spring. The crack seal will come first, and then the seal coat will come second. But the engineers say that they have never built this out until the fall. So it will be in, with any, I mean, technically, it could be, but they haven't, they've always been in the fall when they build that out, so...
So both of these potentially will fall into the next fiscal year?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
What was our totals on them?
Estimate, these are all estimates, we, they haven't been bid out or anything, but the estimate for the county portion of the crack seal would be $2,829. And the county's portion of the seal coat would be 7,221.
It's, it's with that one.
That's county-city total. They made an arrow.
Oh, okay.
You'll see the, on the crack seal contract, they'll have the number 5,658.51. That's for both, the county and, so that 2,829 is just half of that, so the county's Under my understanding, that this contract for the crack seal, I believe there should be another one coming later on for that, similar to this, just a, just, it'll, should have almost all the same numbers as the, they just haven't grew up a, or a seal coat contract yet. The state hasn't, so that's why. But the contract for the, for the crack sealing is gonna come first, so they got that contract out first.
You guys want, need us, Chairman, signature on that today to move forward?
Yes, if we could, please, we're gonna meet with the city tonight.
Okay.
And like to, if, if you need more discussion, that's fine, we can take a copy to the city and see what, you know, see their, if you want more, to discuss it more.
I'd make a motion to allow the airport board to move forward with the crack seal and coating at the airport. The engineer's estimates of the county's share would be $2,829 and $7,224. That's our share of the engineer's estimate.
Got a motion to move forward? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion properly seconded, discussion?
I, you know, and, but we're very blessed to have this airport that we have, for the, no bigger than our community is, for the size of our airport. You know, there's a lot of people that fly. This is a good place, if somebody out of Rapid takes off, has a place, problems, it's a good place for them to put down. We'd be crazy not to move forward, upkeep our airport, especially when majority funds are coming from the FAA on that, so...
If I could, we'll comment, too. There, there is some other good things going on in this county, if you know, the, the mineral things in Upton, it's going on, the rare earth things and that. There's, that's, that's gonna be a millions-of-dollars project. That's gonna bring a lot of interest from people all over the, kind of the country, but probably the world in here. And they'll have to fly. So that's one thing we talked about with our engineers and even with the, with the Wyoming Air and OX board about, down the road with what's going on here, it benefits us to have a, a nice airport. Functional, usable, not a dirt strip.
Any other discussion? Call for the votes, and with our motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passed.
I'd say thanks. Thanks. We need their signature on them, so we can take them tonight, so we can have them at the county, at the city-county tonight.
And just, just kind of a, this crack seal and seal coat is done every four to five years, and it's, the state's broken up into sections, and it's our turn, we're in that section, northeast section now, and Gillette's doing it, and Buffalo and Sheridan and everybody else, and this is, this is why, they just, it's a state maintenance program, so we don't have real expensive problems later on down the road.
The main runways are concrete, aren't they?
It's an asphalt over concrete. We work concrete, and then we just get an asphalt overlay on that.
It's smooth, dude. It's smooth. Yeah. Any other big plans going on at the airport?
Well, we're, we, kinda, we have a hangar project, but that's, we're still working with the FAA and the state on that.
Pretty much all finalized, except exactly where we wanna put it. There's a nine-foot disagreement or questionable, I guess, between where we want it and where the FAA and the state says need to put it, so... Our engineer, engineering firm tells us that they're working on that, and they think positive things may happen shortly.
Tuff, once the mayor signs these, will you give me copies of them?
Sure. Yeah, I'll give them a copy, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, guys.
Thank you. See you later.
Thank you.
Yep. See you. You want me to hit your brake pedal?
Yeah, if you don't mind, lift it. Thanks, Tuff.
Before you continue, I would like to apologize for the interruption. My phone is maxed out, and as I went to try to dump the video, my computer screwed up, so it's still dumping, and I'm having to use a very unfamiliar phone. So I apologize to the board for the interruptions.
That's okay.
That's fine.
Little bit ahead, which, on this portion, anyway, Newsletter Journal.
Okay. I think you all know Kim Dean, Managing Editor for the Newsletter Journal, and I'm gonna pass out some advertising proposals for you. So first off, I'd like to thank you for your support last year, when I approached you guys to run some extra advertising, you know, even though you had picked the Gazette for the legal newspaper last year. So mainly what ran in our paper last year were the courthouse closures, the board openings, which ran once a month, help wanted ads, and special meeting notices. So you can see the total cost of the advertising expense for everything. That included the delinquent tax listing notice, which was 2181. Was 4,869 is what you spent with us last year. And there were a couple, there were a few other county accounts that ran six help wanted ads for less than 300. So, but, and I would like to ask for those same, the same kind of a deal that you did last year with us, but I would also like to include a few additional ads. And this is mainly because I had readers come in and ask during the election year, the last election year, if the ballot was gonna run in our paper, the election ballot. And when I told them it was not, you know, they expressed concern, I said, "Well, we're not the legal newspaper, it's running in the Gazette." But I do think that's important. I think that's an important thing that should run in our paper, even though you didn't pick us for your legal publication. So I estimated a cost of that at 1,400. And then I also think it's important for those property tax reminders to run in our paper, which may even help reduce the delinquent tax, the size of the delinquent tax notice that runs in the paper. So there's a first installment. If you pay them all in full before, well, it's usually December 31st, but it's usually extended to January 2nd. There's no interest charged. And then the final installment, so that's three ads, and those would be roughly 300. And that's the print proposal that I am proposing for this year. But there is also this social media part that Bob had proposed to you guys, and I guess Kira had asked more about that. So that part, in order to qualify for the $5,000, $5,200 website and social media promotion, typically you would run a two-by-two business directory ad with a scan code, the scan bar that would direct everyone to your website. And I did include our stats for you two, website stats. And we do have a lot of following in all those promotions that Bob had proposed to you earlier. Do you have any questions? And Bob is here.
Hello, Bob.
Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions, just to support Kim, I guess, what you have been before you is, just a proposal of our idea of what it would take using a combination of our print and online resources to truly inform your community and constituents. You know, there's, there's a lot there, there's, we tried to shoot for about what you guys spend for, for meeting the legal minimum requirements and give you the audience that we think you have to have to truly provide the service that that statute intends you provide to your citizens. A lot of those numbers are, they might make your head spin, 'cause they're so large, but if you have any questions on them, feel free to ask. We work really, really hard to make sure we keep subscription numbers up on our printed online products. And a lot of times, you ask about cost, and that's where it comes from. I've gotta employ people, and we've gotta create product and content to keep interest and keep all those people coming back and buying newspapers and clicking online. So that's as comprehensive of a, of a package and as affordably priced as I think I could put together to truly give the people of Weston County the service I think they deserve. together to truly give the people of Weston County the service I think they deserve.
So my point of view on this is that this is, at minimum, we should do what we did last year. I thought that was handled very well. I think it's always important to get notices out to the community. I actually do like the idea about the tax, delinquent tax notices simply because it may reduce, that may make the county a little less delinquent if people are more aware of what's going on, but ultimately, it's in the board's expression.
I agree with Chairman Taylor. I think we should do what we did last year. I think we should do the delinquent tax notices. But I also think we should do the ballot because I think election year, that's, that's pretty important transparency-wise for us to put that out there for people to see and hopefully encourage more people to go vote once they see it. So I do, you know, as much as social media is becoming very important, I, at this point, I, I actually don't think our website is up to par enough that we should promote it.
I mean, other discussion?
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, if I could just respond to Commissioner Huber and mostly just agree with her. I do think your website needs a lot of work. And so in some respects, some of what we could do would certainly be too much. But I suggest again with this promotion that you need to start somewhere. And what we can offer for $5,000 a year overcomes a lot of the shortcomings that your digital presence has in the county right now for a much lower price than any tech experts or anybody else is going to charge you. I think us linking to the county website and putting that out in front of people will force the issue and ultimately it forces the county to improve, but not only improve the website, but inform how you want to improve it. If we increase demand to your website, you'll know what kind of fixes and improvements and upgrades you need to make to your website. And a year from now, maybe if you're able to seriously tackle that question, we'll have some data and stuff to back up the direction that you choose to go with it. And I think at $5,000, that's above and beyond the messaging potential and how many of your people you get your messages, special meetings, everything like that becomes free online posting if you have that $5,000. And so I think you improve service to your community, but you're also going to create a lot of data and knowledge for yourselves that will guide your future decisions and you won't be shooting in the dark when you decide you do want to upgrade your website. So sorry to interrupt, but I did want to make that point. And thank you for your point.
And board, please correct me, but I believe last year this time, we did talk about investing some money into our website. And that, I don't know that that ever materialized. And there could have been valid reason for it, but I do remember us talking about taking the time to invest in it and improving our website, and maybe this is an opportunity for us to do that.
Breakdown of the 6,500, just for fun fact, monthly, we're looking at about 241 bucks, 541 bucks for, if we were to agree on the 6,500, including the website, social media, and the election ballot. Is that what it was?
And that would include the posting of the print?
Yeah, I estimated that at 1,400. It was, the print proposal is 6,500, and then the social media was 6,500 also.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did, and I did talk to Kim right before the meeting, the $6,500 digital proposal included a monthly ad, print ad to qualify, because that's actually half-priced, that digital proposal, to get all that digital actually costs $10,000 in the real world. But I, but I reduce it for those entities where a legal newspaper, those advertisers that advertise with us once a week. I put those additional print ads in there to be fair to my other advertisers who do this, so it would balance things out. But then I looked back through last year's papers and you're so close to averaging, if you, if you add the election, what I didn't consider, if you add the extra two ads from Kim, and that Kim proposed on the tax delinquency notice and the ballot, it will actually take you to a one ad per week average if you do the same amount of print advertising as last year, which means I can dump that $1,300 and I can also round the 5,200 to 5,000. And that would be in line with what my other advertisers in the community pay. And that's as much, I try to drive the price down as much as possible for you while still respecting my other advertisers. So you can take 1,500 off the digital part of that proposal and we eliminate the print ad, the monthly print ad, and we round down from 5,200 to 5,000 for the digital. And I can do that in good conscience and in fairness to my other advertisers. Because I do think it would be a good thing for you to do.
Thank you.
You go.
What's the rule of the board?
This, the print proposal, 6,500. You know, last year we ran a lot of help wanted sites because we was looking for courthouse maintenance person. What happens if we don't run that many ads?
Then your cost is lower than 6,500. I just kind of worked off what you spent with us last year, but I'm assuming this could be less because maybe you're not going to need that many 25 help wanted ads this year.
How long are the discount that I offered either way?
Okay. So this, this, the print one, that's just a, you're just shooting, that's what we're showing us what we did last year.
Yeah. I worked off that.
It's not a, it's not a contract.
It's not set in stone, no, but I was trying to give you an estimation cost. But yeah, it's going to depend on, I mean, obviously you'll run 11 monthly board opening ads and you'll run your courthouse closures, which shouldn't run about the same. But yeah, it's your help wanted ads. You only ran two special meeting notices last year. So I guess it depends on how many special meeting notices you would have. But the others are pretty close to your estimation. When readers come and talk to me about, you know, why isn't the ballot in the paper, I always encourage them to come and visit with you, but I don't know if they ever do. But I hear it. So I like to pass it along. I like to be a voice for our readers. And I do think it's important for you to get as much information in front of people as you can, your constituents.
I have a question for you. On these 7,000 daily visits, how many of them are from Weston County?
Oh, there's nowhere near 7,000 from Weston County. There's not enough people for that. I'll tell you, Commissioner Wagner, I don't know. I don't know. I can grind it down to a couple hundred or a couple of thousand. But that's the thing with online, you've got to create product and you've got to keep it out there and you keep people coming back. Those who say, oh, government websites are good enough, nobody goes and visited, visits government websites. We put information out that's designed to draw people to our website and our other online sources. The majority of that information is from Weston County, so the majority of our viewers, readers, listeners are from Weston County as well. But yeah, no, we, we got, and we got a lot of ex-Weston County residents still stay connected with the community. I suppose there's prospective Weston County residents in there. It's a lot of bodies, way more than Weston County delivers, but I don't apologize for that. We work hard for that. You'll never hear us selling the minimum requirement to you. We're always going to go above and beyond.
Well, I just, what I was going with that is where our times are tough, we're at, if, say if we get 100 visits a day out of the 7,000, percentage-wise, we're throwing most of our advertising out to people not in Weston County.
Well, you're missing most of the people in Weston County doing what you're doing now, and that's why I'm proposing this to you. Sorry if I'm going to bring a few extra along, but that's what it takes in modern media to do the job.
You know, looking out for our Weston County people.
So am I.
Versus all the people on the internet.
A lot of Weston County people are there, Mr. Wagner.
What's the rule of the board?
What are you thinking on the cost for the ballots? Put them in there too?
Could be a one-time run of 1,400.
1,400. Okay, there you go. I do know that the Weston County Gazette has a webpage too. I think we are on the internet, a lot of the stuff they put on there too. I wouldn't discount the sentiment though, that it's important that the people in Newcastle, if they're not a subscriber or walk up here to see the ballots, I think that's good that they have an ability to see them.
Do we want to vote on this as two separate things or as one?
I would say you could do that or make them two separate motions or whatever you want to do there.
I would make a motion that we approve the advertising, newsprint advertising with the newsletter journal for the coming year, 2024, including election ballot and if the tax delinquent notices that were suggested.
Got a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
That was on the print proposal.
Yep. Have we concluded?
I guess I, I'm going to start encouraging us to look at our own website and get it updated and presentable, and then I would feel better about putting it out there on social media. At this point, I think it's, we don't have the information on there that we should feel good about sharing at the moment. I think it could be much improved and then I think that would be something that we could think about then as kind of opening the door to introduce people to it. Just my opinion.
All right. I appreciate you guys coming in.
Yes, thank you very much. To have the newsletter and the reading.
Thanks, Bob.
I do appreciate that. Mr. Kayler, if I could?
Yes.
Just wanted to let you know that that rate is available weekly. It's 100 a week instead, or 200 a week instead of 100 a week. But Commissioner Huber, for you specifically, as I threw out there, the idea to use something like that to inform your decisions on your website, perhaps at a smaller level. I do know you talked last year about improving the website. I don't know if you set money aside for that, but at a future date, those of you who are interested in pursuing that, we could certainly work on this on a smaller level over a few weeks or even months that would provide you with some of that data to make a more informed decision about your website moving forward. I think, I'd like to make sure that you know that possibility still exists. The discounted rate's gone because we're not making a long-term commitment, but there's still a lot of value to what our digital properties do and what value it brings to you in making that decision moving forward.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bob.
We appreciate both newspapers, by the way.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Have a good day, y'all.
Yes, sir.
Becky, why don't you invite our website guy for taking a meeting? Should we do something like that?
We're not getting overlapped.
You want to invite him for the next meeting or?
Whenever. It'd be a good start.
Just see what you can do for us before we go further.
All right. Security policy and travel policy.
Did you guys get a copy of that? We sent up? Yeah. We'll start with the travel deal we made, and they're highlighted on that policy, it's a Weston County credit card usage agreement, number six, daily meal allowance is to be determined by the GSA or US Federal Services Administration for DM rates established for the location of travel. That's the, that's the change there. It used to be, previously it was $60 period, but now it reflects.
The area?
Area. The other thing we looked at is on number nine, no state's, state sales tax shall be paid on credit card purchases, certificate of tax exemption. Forms are available from the clerk. We put, what we changed there is we put a sub-note in there. Not all states or locations accept the Wyoming certificate of tax exemption, so if you travel out of state, they typically don't accept that. And Wyoming does the same thing. Somebody's coming from out of state, they don't typically, on state sales tax, they don't accept each other. So that's the two changes that we made.
So pretty much saying, as long as you make the attempt to provide the form, it will have to be denied.
We do, because I've traveled, I was in Colorado Springs, and the hotel, everybody took it off of there. Typically, that's not the case in Colorado, but they did it. And again, these are your policies, we just, those are the changes we are proposing.
These are, I'm sorry, these are that, this is what we talked about earlier, you know, a few minutes ago, right?
Yep.
So, okay.
Motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the Weston County credit card use agreement as amended.
We have a motion properly seconded on the floor. Discussion?
Once we approve this, then we need to get this to Jeannie to go in the handbook so we don't have to do a resolution for that right away.
Also, another thing, is there, to simplify that process, so when those invoices or receipts come in to Becky, can we have a note on those saying that the attempt was made and denied? That would save her after you do the background.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember to do that, yeah. I mean, no, I get, that's actually a good idea.
Yeah, just have a star, I mean, whatever, whatever that means, so, so you're not having to contact and say, hey, we paid sales tax on this one.
That's a good idea. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes.
Yep. No, the next one is the security cameras in your courthouse, or in this building. We ran into a couple issues, but what we want to do is we want to, not... We ran into a couple of issues, but what we want to do is we want to, no, we want to control who can record or pull recordings. We need to limit that down to, part of the purpose is, there's a couple of reasons. One, number one, and from a, from a law enforcement point of view, the most important one is a chain of custody issue. If we have a crime or something like that's committed here and we've got to pull that recording for evidence, anybody that has the ability to pull that recording will have to testify to what they did or did not do, you know, those kind of things, just a chain of custody issue. So we want to limit that down to the sheriff's office and the courtroom security officer and probably Gilbert, since he's doing that. So, doesn't mean you can't pull a recording. Doesn't mean that at all. What it means is, the only thing we need is some sort of documentation in place stating, hey, so like if Garrett, you wanted to pull a recording, you'd fill out a document as to why you need that recording, what timeframe that is, then they can pull that recording when you have that. The other issue is, and we're working on resolving on the backside of it, but I had a public defender come up to me, oh, a few months ago, there was a juvenile case in the courtroom upstairs. And those juvenile cases are sealed most of the time. And he was on this floor and overheard folks talking about the individual in the courtroom. Now, you could see that person walk up the stairs, but the actions of the individual was while they were in the courtroom. So that was the other concern there. So we will, we're gonna work through that. It won't, it'll be separate from this policy with the court clerks to, we gotta figure out a way to toggle those cameras off to the rest of the population while those hearings are going on. So, that's what this reflects. It doesn't change a whole lot. The other thing we ran into, we had a jury trial a week or so ago and I think we only got six licenses? Six licenses. So only six computers can be watching at the same time. We want to fix that, too, because that particular time, we had several people watching what was going on up there and other people were wanting to watch their camera system and they can't get on. We don't want that either. I mean, Becky's sitting in her office and something's happening down here. I want her to be able to see what's happening down here, because she might be the only one that can call 911. Same thing might go for upstairs, you know, they're watching the cameras for the whole building. Something, they hear a commotion down here, they can look, see what's going on, maybe make those phone calls. I think those licenses are two hundred dollars. So we figured that'd be about twelve to fifteen, seventeen hundred bucks, something like that, to get more licenses for this building. So we want to look at that. That would probably be asking you for that money to provide those more licenses. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the cameras we're talking about, you got video and audio?
Just video.
Video, okay.
They can get on. If the camera has it. So we can get audio, but you do not have audio.
Okay.
Or they can add a mic to those. We can add audio, too. Is there, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is there value to getting audio? Probably for, I don't know, that's kind of a big brother thing. I mean, from a investigative thing, you know, we like it easy. So, yeah, that'd be great. But on the other side, I mean, that's something, I don't know, we gotta work that out. But I don't know that we'd all want to be listening to what other people's conversations are. I don't think, you know, conversation in her office needs to be listened to.
Right.
But then maybe the ability to pull that, I suppose, if some significant thing came up. Because right now, you're set up for just video.
You're, you're talking about getting more people access to the cameras on a daily basis.
Reason I want that, or I think that's important, is, is, you know, Becky could be sitting at her desk doing something and hears a commotion upstairs, she can look at the camera and see what that commotion is. Those ladies upstairs may not be able to push their panic button or dial 911. She would be in a position to make that phone call right now, right, and give us at least an idea of what's going on up there. Because during that jury trial, we had several computers pulled up watching that and not everybody could get on. And, and, I mean, that was more of a spectator sport there. But that brought to mind the problem with, you know, it goes the other way around. There could be something going on downstairs or, let's say, in her office and they're hearing it upstairs. You can hear pretty good in this building. Her girls might not be able to dial 911 because that action is happening in there. But these other offices may, if they think to look them up on the camera. So it's the recording and being able to play back and pull recordings we want to limit that access to.
So now who, right now, who has access to it?
I think every license has an, or everybody that is on can pull, you can pull recording, can't you?
I have no idea how to do that.
Who has access now to watch?
It depends.
I think it's downloaded on everybody's computer.
It's downloaded on everybody, but only six can be on it at a time.
Oh, so if somebody, if six already log on, nobody else can log on. So it's the first come, first served. Okay.
Everybody in the courthouse or just in a, one, one computer in each?
Oh, no, just, just the elected officials. And then like the jailer, Gilbert, Kim.
Yeah, there's two, two stations downstairs that have the license. So when we're, when we're doing that, that first come, first served thing, as you say, then, then that brings to concern that, you know, if she's not just, then have to be monitoring it. But if she hears a commotion, she can't get on to see what's going on.
See, like the incident that happened in, in this room, when, because we all try to watch this room and the incident that happened in here and the reason that that alarm is there and this door stays shut, when that, when this door is open, your dog barks and then it's an alarm. And then we can make sure that it's an employee in here and not like the incident that happened before and there was something stolen out of here and we didn't know. Now we can just pull it up and make sure that it's actually an employee in here and not someone doing like what happened before. But they can't hear that alarm downstairs, they can't hear it upstairs, they can't hear it over there.
I think it's, it helps your safety quite a bit, like everybody being able to watch those cameras.
It's just not up all the time. It's only one of them. Monitor both of them.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna...
Your next thing.
Under, you know, that letter, it's just, those, those six were the only ones that could get on. But if any, all the elected officials on it, it's just the first six are the only that can get on.
Yeah. And if we, we got something going on in the courtroom upstairs, both of ours downstairs are occupied. So now it's just down the floor.
I just had a conversation, I got introduced to the courtroom security officer, is that correct? She is not courthouse?
Well, we do that, obviously, if need be.
She informed me that she was courtroom woman.
She's part-time. So we, we schedule her for court days.
So she's only in this building during days in this court?
Yep.
And is that, is the state helping pay for that?
Nope. State doesn't help us pay for any of this court security stuff, for the most part.
Is, is there added expense if you added audio?
Well, I'm sure there is, all the cameras.
It would be, um, so they either would have to, have to add a mic if the cameras don't have it or some of the cameras might have a mic already in it, it's just not turned on. So they would have to come through and see which one. So it'd either be adding a microphone in there with the camera or turn, activating the camera portion. The software portion of it doesn't add any more cost on it, it would just be the equipment.
Is, is there a way that you can add audio for investigative purposes only, but like she couldn't hear the conversation in the assessor's office?
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing we talked about. We'd have to be able to figure out how to toggle that. You know, I'm sure it can be done. That's not my...
There'd be a lot of legalities there.
Might be a permissions type thing in the software.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious. Then you'd have to watch for like executive sessions and then it had, you'd have to call someone to shut that off. Exactly, exactly. There'd be a lot of things going on.
Yep, there's a, and same thing with the sealed courtrooms, because like that public defender, you know, it wasn't that big of a deal because he was more worried about the audio. The fact that somebody on this floor was watching it is bad enough, but, so we'd have to figure, we're gonna have to figure out how to toggle that courtroom, even the camera usage in the courtroom for those sealed hearings as well.
In, in your opinion, it's better without audio, even though it would make your job easier?
Well, I don't like a big brother thing. I don't, I just don't. But if we can ensure that the audio is only being used on a retrieval basis, you know, for some sort of investigation, then I, I think that'd be good. But that's a double-edged sword. I don't like it a lot.
I like with your sound executive session, if the camera in here doesn't have the audio function, then you don't have to worry about it. Exactly. So you could, you could limit which, which rooms or where you have your audio.
So you're gonna do a proposal on the licenses and present it to us? We'll, we'll get you a bid. Okay. And how soon do you? We can do that, probably by the end of the week, have that. So can I move it to whole business? Yeah, the, the policy, though, I want you, still want you to focus on right now. Those are a side point for that.
I have another question. On the, obviously, the, all the video and the cameras are recorded and the recording is held.
So it's like a lot of recording systems, they eventually dump if you don't pull it. In other words, I don't know what, how much storage we got, but I think last I knew it was like ninety days-ish and then it just automatically dumps.
And hopefully at that time, you're...
You don't need it, yeah, because it's gone.
Wonder if there would be, obviously, it's recorded, if, if it would not, if audio would not be broadcasted to the live feed of the camera, but just ultimately recorded?
Just held in the recording, that's what we were looking at.
Would be something.
Be further talks of Golden West on that portion of it.
That would simplify things on our end and maybe help.
Oh, it would, everybody. Because I think, even with this policy, the only, this is just who has access to pull recordings. And it's not that nobody does, we just are forming a way to document who's pulling what for, you know, their own reason, that's fine. But if it comes up later and we've got documentation, that's why it was done.
So the language in this doesn't make it as easy as going down and filling out a piece of paper. It says in here that if, after good cause has been provided for access to certain footage, one of these individuals with authorization to access camera footage will access requested footage for viewing. I mean, I guess who are we permitting access from?
So I'll give you an example.
Who becomes the...
I'll give you an example. Let's say, let's say Becky's on vacation and then she gets back and a citizen comes into her and says, hey, your deputy clerk was rude to me or slapped me or whatever. She would, that's good cause to go back and look at that footage to see, so she can settle that complaint, right? So she can settle that complaint. That would be real good cause to have access to those recordings. Obviously, let's say you witness a crime in here, that would be good cause for us to go in and pull those recordings to use that as an evidentiary thing. But it would also work in just a taking care of your own business, you know. So like if, if she had a complaint that was maybe filed against an employee, then that would be good cause to pull that and review it so she could answer the complaint.
At the end of the day, you're gonna make that decision?
I, I, yeah, I mean, to that extent, if it's, if it's a good reason to pull it. I mean, if, if you come to me and say, hey, I want to know what's going on in the assessor's office and I say, well, why would you need to know, you don't need that video and you don't have any reason other than, then you're probably not gonna get it.
But you can, you can rewind it within a certain amount of time without having to go to a recording. I had a gentleman in my office accusing my employee of not giving them back their change. I could go back right to it and rewind it within five minutes and, and say, I'm watching her give you your change back. That, that doesn't go into the recording. And a recording is like months where it actually has to be.
I'm just trying to figure out a chain of command here. I mean, there's obviously a chain of command. I'm trying to understand this.
So we just contact Brian or does it say that?
Apparently you need to go in front of one of these three designated individuals.
Yeah, you'd limit the...
And they go in front of Brian with the request.
Well, and it doesn't necessarily have to be me, but yeah, they, and we can, you guys can change. This, again, is your policy. But we, it needs to be controlled with limited access. That's how you do your chain of custody.
You know, I was made on that, some of that wording there, because we just went through the employee handbook and we thought, you know, reasonable cause to go into somebody's computer was good wording. Well, Deputy Attorney Stone said, no, we don't want that in there. Any supervisor can go anybody's computer. Well, here we're saying this recording, which is public record, we gotta go through one of three individuals to get it and not just a supervisor. So we're kind of conflicting, you know, our, our handbook is saying, no, we don't want reasonable cause to look at an employee's computer, but yet this policy is saying we need reasonable cause to just look at video footage. We need to get some consistency between our policies. That was one of my concerns there.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, but wouldn't, if we, if we did it Jeannie's way, what, what she was saying is it's county property, which the courthouse is county property. If you add something in there, then you're creating a step, like you were just saying. But if you leave it out, probably what, how would you? And let me ask Michael on this, but let me, let me maybe see if this works. Maybe you don't need good cause, but we need documentation that you pulled the recording on the assessor's office.
I can see pulling the recording off where you need that chain of command. But to go back and review it, or chain of custody, but to go back and review it, you know, because something might happen, it's like, well, oh, no, it's nothing, don't need to review it, you know, don't need a recording of it. But if you need a recording, then I can see going through having, pulling a recording for reasonable cause.
That's what that's, yeah.
You know, not, not to view it, but to pull it, to pull a recording for reasonable cause.
We...
I think that's the whole point of the policy anyway, is pulling the recording anywhere.
Yeah.
I like those concerns on access and confidentiality and whatnot. I think that's what it's tailored towards.
Why don't you go, reach out to Golden West on that? Could you, is there a way that, if they could put like a priority? So like one person on each floor would have priority, so if we got twelve licenses and there's thirteen people on there, somebody's priority would bump somebody.
Yeah. Because I think we figured the number of licenses to every office in this courtroom, in this building, plus we're on dotted ours, you know, on the jail site, so we can monitor one of those computers down there. So we monitor for additional, so that would eliminate the need for that.
Okay.
Is that correct? Is that how we figured that out? Yeah. We'll double check that, but that was the whole point, is, is every office downstairs, upstairs and on this floor, plus one down there at the, where all the other cameras are.
So we're not too many licenses off?
No, I think we're, like I said, it was around fifteen hundred bucks, fourteen hundred bucks to finish it. Because I don't want to bump, you know, the more I thought about that, the less I like the idea of bumping somebody else off when something else could be going on.
I, I think what, I'm going back to the, with cause. It sounds good, but I thi, I think maybe the with causes, like we said in, in the handbook, is what needs to be taken out. If, because say, say you had an employee who had some altercation with their supervisor and they wanted to go look at it. If they, if they were told it was, really wasn't that big a deal, well, it is to them. And I think as long as you have, as long as you have that chain of custody where you signed off that you did watch it, that's really the most important part, right? And, and I'm sure there's, is there a place on the form where you have to say why you're, you're requesting it? So I think that would, if we took the without or with cause out of there, the form's gonna take care of that. Right? Am I thinking right? Right? Am I thinking right? You're gonna still have to go through one of those people to get to it.
That'd be more of a Michael question, I think.
Yeah, the only concern I have, maybe Brian can disagree with me or correct me or not, but like, what, what kind of criteria are we? I mean, I just don't know what we're gonna create if everybody can just go pull camera footage.
And I don't think you want to do that, I think you still want to narrow that down and you want to, that cause, you want to, you need a reason.
And you're gonna put your reason on your form, and you're still gonna have to go through one of you to get to the recordings.
I think we've got it narrowed down to three ways to do that.
If we don't have that in there, then they don't have any authority to gatekeep basically.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, because I can't, I'm not gonna tell you no, is the whole, like he's saying, there's no gatekeeping authority, there's just.
Is this a problem?
We don't, just for pulling the recording with cause.
Yeah.
How many recordings are being requested on?
Well, not necessarily requested, but, but viewing, and, and yeah, we've had a few requests.
In the course of a year or?
Yeah, I'd say eighteen months. And, and those requests haven't been a problem. But the problem would be, is if the people that have access to those computers can pull recordings on their own and there becomes a criminal issue there, there's no chain of custody for that evidence. So everybody, everybody in this courthouse that has access would have to testify to the fact that they did not review those recordings or put them on a junk drive. That's what we're trying to do, it's a pain.
I get it in some respects, but I also don't like the with cause aspect of it, because there may be a different individual in your seat that tells me, hey, I'm saying, you know, and I might have a very legitimate reason.
Well, and like Mike said, there's nothing in here, I'm not, there's nothing in here that says that you're not gonna get the recording, you just have to make the statement as to why you need it. So that way if it comes back.
Documentation.
That way if it comes back.
I'm perfectly okay with that.
Yeah, if it comes back, it comes back on the person made, that made the request, right? It doesn't come back on Becky, because she maybe record, pulled the recording for somebody else. See what I'm saying?
Becky's not that tech savvy.
No, but you have to testify to that, that's the, that's the whole point.
Just for conversation purposes, do you have an example of, of a situation that you would deny the request?
No.
Okay.
Unless we had cameras in the bathrooms, then I could see a possible.
I would also say that there's, there's, I mean, you're not gonna pick up private information with these things, I mean, it's.
Well, it's a public building, you know?
The only place that I would really, really concerned would be upstairs.
Exactly, and that's, that would be another concern, and we gotta, you know, somebody, let's say, let's say Becky does know how to pull a recording and she pulls a recording of a juvenile case, that's a huge problem too.
Or even, I think there's a camera in one of those witness rooms too, isn't there?
Yeah.
There's some people that don't need it.
Attorney client privilege stuff.
Attorney client privilege, victims of crimes, that stuff that needs to be thought about too.
Anything else? Anything else?
So we'll just move it, yep, we'll move it to whole business, give you an opportunity to.
Yeah, Mike, I'll visit that, that cost thing in there, clean that up a little bit.
All right.
Key fob. Fob portion.
Oh, I didn't even get to that, go ahead. What we, in the bottom here, it talks about, that was the other part of this, was issuing key fobs to this building. Want to isolate them so more people can issue key fobs, you know, like the detention officers can issue, we want to be able to issue to the police department. And then we want, we want to see if we can figure, well, go ahead and read that part of it for me.
It's the, the access in the fob standard, so it would, to activate, to give the people access of new employees, so a department head would, would send the form over of, you know, for who was gonna get access on that, so it would just control who, one point of, or.
One point of contact.
Contact for the fob portions of it, and then when somebody is terminated or, or if they leave or they're, they're terminated from employment, so then that department head would have to immediately notify like the sheriff's office, because we could deactivate that at any time, any day. And so it wouldn't be like, person gets terminated over a weekend or something, like, well, we'll just have to do that.
Because we can do that twenty-four seven.
Immediately, and that's the point of that is to.
We can also issue it too, so if you have a, we could do a temporary, like we do over there, we could do a temporary fob for, like you have carpenters working on the weekend, we could actually issue that out temporarily. Somebody has to be here to let them in and out. But the biggest one is, is denying that access as soon as somebody's terminated or we have a problem. And immediately. It's literally keystrokes on a computer, it's pretty cool. That's the, that's the bottom segment.
Right now, who, or how has it been with the key fobs?
I do them.
You're the only one? Will someone still, will Becky still have access to do them too?
We sure could, yeah, I, we were just looking at a way to do that twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I can see, I can see, you know, shutting them off like that, but, so some new employee here in the courthouse, instead of running over to the sheriff's department, you know, because she could still issue them. Suzie's key fob quits work and she could re-issue a new one, you know, turn the old one in. Maybe awful handy if somebody here in the court, in the courthouse could actually do it too.
And I'd like to see that we get those issued to the police department officers as well, so they can gain access immediately.
So something's going on in here.
Anything else?
Do we need to make a motion for that or anything or?
Well, we're gonna have to, I'll give it Mike, I'm gonna clean up that.
Oh, that's part of that, okay.
All right, we'll add it to the next whole business so that we can follow up on it.
Okay.
Thank you guys, appreciate you coming in.
Thanks guys.
Here? Yeah, sorry for the delay.
Oh, you're all right, no worries. And I brought pesticide applicator, the class is coming up here in a couple of weeks, and then they're offering a farming above seven class as well, so I brought some of those. All right. So Erin Percy, Weston County 4H educator, super excited, enrollment is a hundred and sixty-five youth enrolled for twenty twenty-four across forty-four project areas, and we have thirty-two volunteers enrolled. So I've been kind of looking back at numbers, and it took me until June of last year to hit a hundred and sixty-five, and we are there today. So pretty excited about that number, and excited to have them rocking and rolling into the new year. So shooting sports kicked off last Monday. We have sixty-seven members that are gonna participate across the seven disciplines, and then I just put, so there's fifty-one kids enrolled in archery, forty-six and twenty-two rifle on down the list. Twenty-two rifle and pistol season is happening in Upton, and they're shooting air pistol and air rifle here in Newcastle for the first six weeks, and then we flip flop those seasons. We did end up canceling practice last night because of the cold, so not something we try to do very often, but we decided with the bitter cold to send everybody home, or keep everybody home. Coming up on March twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we are one of the four or five state shooting sports leader trainings offered in Wyoming, so the shooting sports leaders have to recertify every five years to continue to be a leader or certify to become a leader. So that will be hosted here in Newcastle, and over the weekend, they can certify in three of the seven disciplines that weekend. So hopefully we'll pull in quite a few leaders from the area, and it'll give our leaders a chance to certify without having to travel anywhere, which is always really nice, because we ask a lot of our volunteers without having to go out of town. So that's coming up here in the next couple of weeks. Saturday, fingers crossed, the weather is right, and it really truly is forty degrees, because we're gonna weigh in and tag our market steers. I have twenty-one youth enrolled in market beef projects in 4H, and the beef weigh-in and tagging is a 4H and FFA combined effort, so we'll do all of them that day if we have any FFA kids. Curtis Rankin opens up his corrals, because our scale at the fairgrounds is not certified above a thousand pounds, so we will go south of Upton and weigh and tag all of those beef in. The deadline for that is February first, so fingers crossed, it's forty degrees and nice enough to get that done this weekend. If not, we'll bump it to next week. So clover buds, we have twenty-nine youth ages five to seven enrolled in 4H, which is kind of exciting, because that means I've got that many that are excited about rolling into traditional 4H, and that's between Upton and Newcastle. And I'm actually headed to Upton this afternoon to, for their meeting this afternoon, and then we'll meet here in Newcastle on Thursday, so just some fun pictures from shooting sports practice last week, and then went to sewing workshop in December, so the girls all made pillowcases start to finish that afternoon. So it was a lot of fun. Upcoming events, clover buds, continuing shooting sports practices, so each six weeks they'll shoot that discipline, and then we'll end on the sixth week with the county shoot. All the way through, we will finish with shooting sports June seventeenth, which is, then we'll enroll, or hopefully sign up a bunch of the kids for state shoot and go on there. So lots of shooting sports practices in the next few months. Food Fun in 4H was supposed to be this Friday, but with now a full day of school, we'll roll that to next Friday and cook. The fair superintendent meeting is happening next Monday, I'm hosting a volunteer training on the thirtieth, I believe, so, and then just market beef ownership deadline, and then Hale Redding's gonna offer a market lamb and goat selection class coming up the first part of February, so hopefully we're ahead of those kids looking at their market lambs and goats, and hopefully helping them pick a project that will succeed at county and state fair here. So this morning I ran just a report to pull the top ten projects for Weston County 4H. Shooting sports is by far and above the number one project across all the seven disciplines. And then clover buds, visual arts, foods and nutrition, market beef, photography, market smine, fabric and fashion, robotics and horse, so I thought that was just kind of interesting, and kind of what I will use to focus where we spend more time, hopefully, and find some more leaders that will offer classes there. The top right-hand corner is just one of the 4H parents, Upton crew, that's participating in Food Fun in 4H. I thought it was just fun to see a shout-out on Facebook of how much fun they had had cooking this weekend while it was negative temperatures out, so lots of fun 4H stuff going on. And then this week in Weston County 4H, I send that out every single Monday, I put it on Facebook, I send it in an email, and I send it out via, via the Remind app, so it just kind of shows them what's happening for the week, has little reminders of if there's an RSVP deadline coming up. Like Monday, by the time I was ready to send it out, we had canceled shooting sports practice in Newcastle, Upton was still planning to practice, and then kind of updated it for there, but it gives everybody just that little snapshot of what's happening this week. And then new this year on our website, you can actually pull up the 4H calendar, that is kind of a living document as, follow the QR code, it'll take you right there, as we add events, it hops on to that calendar, so everybody has twenty-four access to what's happening in Weston County 4H, so. Tried to make stuff like that as easy as possible, so when it's like, oh, when is county fair, or when is those type of things, it's really easily accessible. So that's what I have, the Wyoming pesticide applicator in-person class will be here on January twenty-fifth. They are only going to offer one class per county this spring, because we're way short ag educators across the state. Our flyer does also list the Sundance and Gillette opportunities, so you don't have to attend, but it's a four-hour class. You have to be there for the four hours, and you leave with your private pesticide application license. So just trying to get that information out, and then that farming above seven PH, they're gonna offer it in-person in Cody, and then virtually across, so you can join virtually. All the information is on that one as well, and if you felt the need to not go to Cody, you could go to Lingle and go to the research center and watch it as part of that group as well. So just some opportunities that are coming up, that we're trying to get pushed out, but the pesticide one, it never fails, the day after the class, everybody shows up at our office, hey, when do I get, it's like that was yesterday. So just trying to put that out there as much as we possibly can, and Becky, would you mind hanging one of those? I don't know if there's one on the bulletin board, I don't remember if Christie brought one up last week or not, so. But any questions, 4H extension wise?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
I wanted to know what the caliber of the dirty hairy that this kid shoots is.
Those are the air pistols, and they are the, they're just so large and awkward, that we actually take a lot of, the younger kids, a lot of them, we don't, they don't shoot pistol just because they are such an awkward, they're just so big. But our shooting sports leaders are an incredible group, they do a phenomenal job, those kids absolutely love going to practice, so it's, it's fun to work with them and see those kids really thrive, so.
And I can personally attest, if you've never attended one of those things at the range or something like that, it is worth going to, it is a blast, and those kids have a ton of fun.
They do, and last year I really thought they were just hazing the new girl, because I get there and Rick, where he is like, I'm gonna need some circus peanuts and gummy bears, I'm like, I am not buying you sugar snacks, like, I'm just not doing it. Like, the sign on the door says, no snacks in the gun range, I'm not buying you snacks. And they shoot the gummy bears, and like, that is no joke, one of their, those kids' favorite things to do is shoot gummy bears and candles and water balloons, and last year the archery guys rigged up like a shot back, so it would blow air up and bounce a ping pong ball on, so that the kids were shooting the ping pong ball, and it was amazing how many of those kids, after a week, could hit the moving ping pong ball. I was flabbergasted, but they have a wonderful time, so, yeah, if you ever have a chance to sneak in on one of those nights, we shoot at the range here on Monday and Tuesday from four to seven, and then in Upton. So we're really lucky to have the opportunity to have really nice ranges that allow us to shoot, so. Yeah, lots of exciting things happening there, but it's fun, it's fun, it's crazy, it's gonna, like, we were looking, fair's gonna be here in the blink of an eye, I swear, so. And county fair theme is back to the eighties, so start thinking, you have to start be looking for some fun, so there should. See, all sorts of fun nostalgia stuff that can roll out for the back to the eighties, so.
We'll explain that to you later, Erin.
I'll get my Afro back.
And the mullet, and, yes.
I had an Afro, that huge one.
See, start planning now and you'll be ready for July twentieth through the twenty-eighth, so. Okay, if nothing else, I will see you guys next month, thank you. Yes, yep, have a great afternoon.
Yes, and fanny packs are all the rage again, and.
Get a Walkman, polyester suit and an Afro, and you're.
Yes.
You got it.
See, there's your, you guys can all be in the fair parade, all dress up.
All right, so we'll swing back to new business that we put.
Not a chance.
Employers Council Renewal.
So it is time to renew our Employers Council membership. We call for enterprise, seven thousand nine hundred a year, includes unlimited hours of consulting with HR professionals and employment law attorneys.
And that's the plan we have now.
And I don't know if we need to bring the other department heads in, but I visited with them, they were happy with it. Some of them did have to use it. They were happy with what they did have to use.
Was there a limitation? And I, I don't know, but was there a limitation, something that just the employees had to go through the department heads or?
So the employees can't call them directly. If an employee has to call them, they can go, like, if they had an issue, if one of my employees had an issue with me, they would have Suzie call them or Karen call them. But an employee cannot call them directly.
And under our policy.
Or they could go to the county attorney. The county attorney could call them.
Isn't that where it should go, to the county attorney and then they make that call?
But if an employee doesn't feel comfortable calling the county attorney, they could go to another department head.
Question for Michael. Have you utilized this in the last year?
Well, yeah. Yeah.
You have with the fair, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the fair and then I know the department heads have reached out and used it every once in a while. It's a really good service and I really think having that third party out there is important too because if, you know, HR's solely within the county attorney's office, then there's a lot of potential conflict in the future. Especially, yeah, I mean, it could get messy quick.
You used it for the fairgrounds and you had some concerns if I'm not mistaken.
Becky and I still, we have to sit down and go through all the invoices. I was a little concerned about some of the charges. That's a little high, to say the least, but.
But we're gonna work through that one.
Yeah.
Response was another issue. You said they were slow.
Felt like on that particular thing, we went pretty slow on that matter that they did the investigation on. I'm like, I'm not one hundred percent sure what the exact issue was on that, whether there was a party involved or them or kind of a combination.
I was doing some research online and, you know, they're not the only company out there. There's other companies that seem to do similar and some of them include hotlines for your hourly employees to be able to call. And one company I was looking at, you actually get assigned your own actual HR person. So it's more personalized that, that if a supervisor needed to call, you'd all be calling the same person. That, that way they get more familiar with, with your company or in this case, the county. I'm, I just think because it's not geared to both the supervisors and the hourly's and it seems like their, their training that they offer is more for supervisors. I, I think we would be amiss not to do a little research on some other companies. If we're going to have, if this is our answer to, for right now, for human resources, that I, I think we should do a little bit more research on other companies out there.
Have we, is there cost comparisons or we haven't done that yet?
The, the couple I looked at, cost comparison was pretty close to the same. A little bit more because the hourly's were included. But there was, there was also some other things that they offered to do that this company, I didn't see that this company offers. So I'm just thinking we need, before we just go ahead and, and sign up with, with this company, maybe we should do a little research.
How long until we have to renew?
It's up to them.
Any other comments?
Just because it's up for renewal, then we can't wait. And if Gary wants to do the legwork of finding a couple of the companies, that'd be more than long to look at. If there's a better option. I mean, is there something, there's nothing binding against to them?
If, if the service, I mean, they don't just cut you off is what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're down at the end of the month if we don't pay it. And just make sure, would you look and see that it's unlimited hours because this is unlimited hours, please?
So do we want to table this and then move it to?
I'll do some research and print some things out, some comparisons. There's one company that said they're in all fifty states. So I wanted to call them and, and see who they served in Wyoming and maybe talk to someone else who uses that service to see what their recommendation is.
Commissioner Todd.
I tell you what, it would be a good decision because we have proved today is a work in progress in other aspects and putting it on the table for today. I mean, it doesn't mean that if we're gonna solve all the issues of tomorrow, putting that, proving that today and by tabling it, if it causes us a month of, I can't call somebody and we're not in much of a different boat than we were a month ago.
That's why I know that we don't have anything ongoing with them that would be a problem. So.
So we'll agree to table it. You'll do some research and we'll bring back.
I'll do some research.
So Lucille called me, Lucille Dumberell, and asked that I would please invite you to the Historical Preservation Meeting on January twenty-fourth at five o'clock PM. There will be a free dinner provided and will be held at the Senior Citizen Center. There will be a presentation from Katie Leeper. She's with the State Historical Preservation Office in Cheyenne. And there will also be discussion about the walls around town.
What time is that? I'm sorry.
At five o'clock on January twenty-fourth at the Senior Citizen Center.
Thank you. Opening Prayer.
I ask that this be added to the agenda of this meeting. Board's wishes a year ago was to, was to have, if there was a prayer outside the, the time of the meeting and for the reasons backing that were for possible litigation, maybe we'd heard scenarios or circumstances, situations that other areas of the country had, have had to deal with with a prayer being inside the meeting. I am requesting that we move the opening prayer inside our, our meeting time rather than purposely having it outside.
Commissioner Todd.
You know, the First Amendment has an establishment clause in it. I'm just playing devil's advocate here, Garrett.
Right.
Basically, that establishment clause is designed to prevent a government entity from establishing a, a religion for that entity. And so with that said, I think you can walk a fine line of what God you're praying to in a public meeting without potentially stepping on toes. I, I mean, I, end of the day, I don't care which way this goes necessarily personally, but I think that outside of the meeting, prior to the meeting, where it's not in actual public business, county business time, for me was probably a preferred option.
I'd echo Commissioner Todd's comments. If it's done before the meeting and not during our structured meeting, I think it'd be a question for Michael, but that pretty well takes the, the county off the hook for any lawsuit, wouldn't it?
It's a lot less. Just get it that way, I think. Once you do it during public meeting time, public business time, you're opening yourself up to some litigation that you don't need to deal with. You know, you just don't want to do that.
My two cents on it is, is that, you know, one in Rome do, as the Romans do, we're in, in a area that, that believes wholeheartedly in freedoms and freedom of speech and freedom of religion and constitutional rights. And I, I hear all of what Commissioner Todd is saying. We take chances on litigation and we, we step back and say, well, let's minimize our litigation. This would be one of those. But in an area where the belief is so strong, I think you also have to weigh, what are the chances of those, that litigation in that area? You know, I may go to China and eat raw fish, but I, I don't have to necessarily eat it. But I don't, I'm not gonna take away somebody else's right to eat it nor believe in that's the right thing to do. I have zero problem with moving it inside the, the meeting if that's, I have zero problem with it not being in there. But I think it's for the area that we live in and, and the people that surround us, I think it's important to a lot of the constituents. It's been asked before and it's been presented before. So that's my two cents. Commissioner Todd?
In good faith of the First Amendment, I believe that we're here to represent everybody equally. And whether you are a one percent minority within the west, beyond Weston County, I don't think that's what they were looking.
Any other comments, Commissioner?
And I might not be popularly agreed with in this, but I'm gonna go back to the campaigning process for this seat. And I explained to my constituents that there were, there were three tiers of, of acceptances that it was, a decision was going to have to pass prior to me making a decision. One of them, being number one, was, was it godly moral and supported by him? Number two was the US Constitution, is it acceptable through that? And number three was the state constitution. At that point, if it passes all three, at that point, it's open for me to make a decision as a commissioner. With that statement being made publicly, I still am in support of it being inside the meeting.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Gordon. And I also, when I was running for this office, said that it was one of my wishes to get it back inside the meeting, partly for personal reasons, but partly because I agree with the fact that in our community, in our state, frankly, it's, it's, it's something that's widely accepted and, and wanted. I see other, you know, federal government praise every day before they start. I realize you may have some people that are against it or don't like it. If you were, if Stan came in and said, I, I don't want you to pray during your meeting, I think if it's on the agenda that we're gonna, that's the first thing we do, then he would understand that. If he wanted to step out while we were doing so, that's okay with me. But I would support having it inside the meeting.
Commissioner Todd?
It's an interesting concept, asking the public to leave the public meeting for prayer. Or you're offering that, I guess.
Well, that's, yeah, that's not really what I said. What I was saying is, is we all have, if, if we pray and you don't want to, I can accept that also. But I think if we're representing, we're representing everyone, but the majority of people, I don't feel like in, in our county would have a problem with it and actually would appreciate it.
Also, what I'd like to add to that is, I want to make sure that the language of this is proper. I'm not trying to influence or persuade a specific religion on, on the board or the, the ones in attendance or anyone at Weston County. We had discussion of this last year on the invitation of, of any houses of worship to be welcome to come and participate with the opening prayer, just to show our, our openness in a lot of ways. I'm not, also, I'm not trying to stimulate litigation in any way. Although if we were to be sued for that reason, I personally cannot think of a better reason to be sued than to have prayer at our meeting.
It's a pleasure to work.
I move that we move the opening prayer inside the hours of our meeting after the opening of the meeting.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion. I'll call to order the vote. All those in favor of the motion to have the prayer moved inside the agenda, do you say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, nay.
The deciding vote, I vote yes. Motion passed. Next one is agenda structure. I actually had an idea about that and even though we can do the agenda in, you know, any way that we would like, with the reason I would like to have discussion and see if you guys like the idea or not and what it pertains to is vouchers. I asked from Jeremiah for a couple sample agendas of how other counties do things. And we don't necessarily have to do that. But one of the things we have talked about before is vouchers. And many counties now, they're putting the vouchers at the end of the meeting simply because when the meeting starts, then people aren't looking at us for an hour or forty-five minutes or whatever to sign these vouchers. Now, they still have a right to be here for it, but it would speed up that portion and put the voucher portion at the end where people could choose to go and they didn't have any more business or they could sit and wait. So I would like to suggest that we move the vouchers to the end of the meeting. I have a sample, a couple sample vouchers that he sent. If that's something you guys would like to do. Hold on one second. The other, the other portion is, is that I'd like to see a commissioner's comment at the end of the meeting as well, just not necessarily for commissioners, but to recognize like when Vicki Hayman, that portion, I kind of liked the way the city council did their recognition portion and maybe have a little section in there for that. And then lastly, I know we have public comment at nine, ten, but a lot of people don't go through the process of hearing what we have going on in the meetings. And I'd like to just add a quick final public comment at the end of the meeting, just so that's their chance. They've heard us discuss certain things and they've taken it all in and be able to comment on those things. So we'll open the floor up for discussion.
I actually like the idea of doing the vouchers during the process of the meeting. I don't think it really holds anything up. I don't really understand that part because you schedule the meeting and the opportunity for more people to be there. If somebody asks you, what are you pulling or why are you pulling it? And what are you signing? It leads for more of an opportunity for that to be visible than at the very end of the meeting.
My mistake if I went pulling it off the agenda, I just meant towards.
No, I mean at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. I just didn't know if I missed. I just didn't know if I misspoke or whatever, but, okay. Anything?
Go ahead. I kinda like it at the first, that way when we, if we pull a voucher, the public, you know, here, they can understand why we pulled it and, you know, some explanation there. Because sometimes there's, we pull vouchers, we know what we're pulling, but some of the public does like, why are you pulling that, why are you discussing that, you know? I prefer it at the first of the meeting. You know, we still have the schedule. People know they don't need, the meeting already don't start till 10, but they can show up earlier if they want to sit here and watch us do vouchers.
Any other comments? Commissioner Gordon?
I'm sorry. I didn't know, Elijah, you wanted to, but you just.
I like the, I kinda like the idea of putting it at the end. I think if someone's interested in the voucher process, they would stay. But I would feel less hurried about going through the vouchers. I would feel like I had more time to look at them closer if it wasn't, you know, at the beginning when everybody's waiting to start the meeting and there's people here that have other things to do. I kinda, I kinda like the idea of putting them at the end.
Commissioner Gordon?
I can see the valid points brought up here too, as far as having the vouchers, specific ones being pulled or talked about during the meeting and questions or whatever. And that has happened, although I feel like we're kind of at a point with our commissioner meetings that we are, we are trying to encourage involvement, whether it be with our departments and things like that. Now, of consideration for the time that they're investing to be here, I'm also for vouchers being towards the tail end and encouraging when, if we do end up adopting that at the end, is also reminding people that if they are interested in sticking around for specifics on vouchers, that way we're not, we're not getting into everyone's time that's waiting here. We can cater to the ones that are interested in those vouchers.
So that's, that's the first discussion. The other one was on adding that comment section for commissioners to maybe recognize county employees or department heads or just a brief recognition or a statement they want to make for that, that meeting. How do you guys feel about that?
Commissioner Hoover?
I think it'd be nice to have that in there, especially if, I don't know, like Nick's working on BLM and there really isn't a lot going on, but he may want to make one short comment or reminder about that or something may, like you said, when Vicky got her award, it would be nice to kind of make that a little separate statement from us, that kind of thing. And if you didn't have anything to say, you know, you don't have anything to say, but it would be on there. So there'd be a point where we could have opportunity. So it'd just be like, to me, a public comment, you could ask for it. If no one has anything to say, then that would be fine, but it would, it would be there if needed.
Any other comments?
And then lastly, on the public comment, putting one at the end after people have been here and they've heard discussion. These are all, like I said, I'm not trying to push anything, I'm just trying to look at, we've all talked about the vouchers before, where we sit here and do the vouchers. And there's been times where we, as commissioners, have tried to avoid doing the vouchers and letting some, you know, that's, that has been apparent. I'm just trying to think of a way to make it a little bit more efficient and less taxing on the constituent that comes in that really wants to speak with us, doesn't want to waste that, that time.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around wasting time. That's the purpose of an agenda. I don't.
Well, there's no hidden purpose behind it, Commissioner.
Well, I'm not saying there is, but, I mean, how is it wasting anybody's time? Half the time, we're sitting in here for 20 minutes after we do the vouchers.
That's true, but I'm saying people sit in here and they watch us.
Which is a great opportunity for them.
It is, but is it any less of an opportunity to put it at the end?
Not really, but I guess, what's the point? I guess, I don't understand that, or are we juggling it?
Again, I don't necessarily think that it's, if we don't want to do it, that's why I'm asking your opinion. I don't have an issue with not doing it, but I have an issue with is, if we can make it better, why not try to make it better?
What makes it better?
Well, you, obviously you think it's better to stay in the front. So how does, how is that better?
I think the odds of people being here in the morning, as far as everybody in their offices, are probably better. I think that there's better chance of me being able to ask somebody to go look something up, there's odds of that being better. I mean, we're currently having conversations with this gentleman about having afternoon meetings. I, you know, I just don't see where, you've got a scheduled agenda ahead of you. I don't know how it taxes anybody by doing these vouchers on that schedule.
And it would still be done on that schedule with people here instead of maybe somebody not coming in till 10:00 or 9:30 or?
So then at 6:00, weren't proven vouchers.
When what?
At 6:00, on David Michael needs an afternoon meeting.
Commissioner, that hasn't even been approved yet. I'm just coming up with ideas.
That's what I'm throwing up.
Well, again, it's not to throw any complication on it, it's to make it a little bit more efficient or possibly more efficient if it's not. You're asking me to say, how is it better? Well, I mean, that's a two-way conversation. I don't know.
That's what I don't understand.
It doesn't necessarily make it better to do it in the morning.
If that were to happen and we do have meeting meetings, there will be no one here to answer any questions on vouchers.
Well, that's true, but the first meeting of the month is when we do vouchers, so maybe that's not something that we can change. I'm not questioning that. I don't know. It is done at other places. I have the sample one, so I guess they're not doing it very good in some of our eyes and we're doing it the best way. I don't know. Any other comments? First, on the first one, does anyone want to change that? And if they do, they'll make a motion and if it passes, we'll do it. And if it doesn't, it fails.
Why do you need a motion?
We don't necessarily, just in agreement.
Becky to change the agenda as you would like it to have changed.
I understand that, but I don't want to do it as I want it. I'd like to do it to make it more efficient for you guys.
I move that we move the vouchers from the beginning portion of our agenda towards the end. For at least this yearly cycle, if it turns out to be something that obviously does not work for, for the board, we can decide that in future meetings.
So I have a motion on the floor for at least one yearly cycle. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
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 Against?
Nay.
Oh. The deciding, I'll vote yes.
I'd make a motion to add to the agenda a place for commissioner comments and a secondary public comment at the end.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion on the floor properly seconded, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I said my votes, yes. Motion passed. Oh, motion's passed.
So I just got another letter Casey Keeler would like to serve on the Weston County Historical Preservation Board. I just need a motion. You guys don't mind her. Casey Keeler.
Is that a continuance?
I just thought that, that letter that I wrote, invitation to the volunteer boards, I cannot get my computer to open and Charles has to help me, there's something wrong with it. We just sent it to Becky because it'll have to go on letterhead, so if we could put that on old business and we could do that, we can sign it next time.
Yep. We can. Do you want to see this? I need a motion to read this one and approve it. Something's going.
And you said there's two openings on this, or?
They're, after this one, I think there's still one, maybe two.
Oh, okay.
I move that Casey Keeler is reappointed to Weston County Historical Preservation Board.
Second. I have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Casey, is it Casey? Casey, sorry, Casey to this board, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Is there anything that he's brought before, anything else that he's brought before the board? Any gentleman?